All right, it is seven P M. We are gonna call this village board meeting to order Thursday, August fifteenth, twenty twenty four, it's seven P M. And the first item on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance. All right, let's make a note to move that back.
You decided to change.
Yeah, just play him. That's a good one. All right, if the clerk could please call the roll. Present. Yeah, we are all here, so obviously we have a quorum. Uh, next we'll move on to the consent agenda, which is consisting of the minutes from August first twenty first, twenty twenty four village board meeting and approving the general fund water and sewer invoices, and I do not believe we have any extra bills.
I moved the approve the consent agenda as present presenter, I'm sorry.
A second.
All right, I have a motion in a second. Is there any questions, discussions, concerns, anything? Now I'll call the vote. Call those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Next, we will move on to presentations, and we have the twenty twenty three audit, Wendy Unger, Baker Tilly.
Um, you should have been provided prior to the meeting, I can, uh, similar to this. This is what I'll move to go through the two thousand documents that we have in front of me. We're gonna go through this at a relatively high level. Please feel free to ask any questions as I will. On the first page of the handle, I highlighted the audit results. The objective of the audit is to issue a financial statement, so the included in your audit statements, if they claim a lot of high old thing, I just want motion, you know, the same type of opinion you received in the past or nothing unusual or unexpected in that document. That document does state that the financial information is believed to be materially accurate to the disclosures that are required to be have been included within the document, and that generally accepted accounting principles have been. So again, very similar to what you perceived. Uh, turning to the next page, I kind of look some very high level financial information, just gonna touch on each of these funds relatively quickly. Um, the first column there is the village's day-to-day operating funds is referred to as your general fund. This accounts for all activity of the village that is not coming in one of the other ones listed on this page or within the water sewer utility. Uh, when we look at the general fund, just a couple of points to make. During twenty twenty three, investment income saw a nice increase. Market was very good in twenty three, so investment income was a hundred thousand dollars more than what you had received in the previous year. Reinforcements from the town of Predonia were also up, uh, also saw some increase in cost, but due to the caution and ratios, you saw an increase in both revenue and expenses. Um, also within your general government category, as I mentioned, matching on the expense side, you did see some additional increases, roughly a hundred and ten thousand dollar increase in wages and a thirty-two thousand dollar increase in your various insurance and by insurance, I mean, you're building your workers count, saw some increases in most categories during the year. So when we look at the general fund, when we look at all mid-page, you'll see the change in bond balance. So the general fund saw a decrease in fund balance during twenty twenty three by roughly thirty-four thousand dollars, ending the year at two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. Village does have a policy to have that fund balance figure to be between twenty-five and thirty-five percent of your operating budget. That number has actually fallen below that minimum threshold, and is that roughly seventeen percent? So as you move into your next budget cycle, keep an eye on it and see um, if there's a, uh, additional items that you can consider to increase that fund balance back up to the amount that is within your policy. Uh, the next column is your fire ambulance, two hundred eighty-one thousand dollars of revenue. Most of that, as you would expect, is ambulance service revenues, four hundred and seventy-nine thousand of expenses, a small portion of that are capital related items roughly seventy thousand, I'm sorry, seventy-five thousand dollars. A portion of that program is funded by the general fund, a hundred and fifty-four thousand comes out of the general fund into that fund to help cover costs. Uh, that fund had a decrease in fund balance during the year and ended the year at a hundred and seventeen thousand. The next column is your paramedic program. Uh, new funding during the year, uh, three hundred and twenty-six thousand of revenue. Most of that is the money that even through uh, Gozaki County, uh, three hundred and twenty-four thousand of that. We spent a hundred and eighty thousand, roughly half of that was on capital items, and that fund ended the year at a hundred and forty-six thousand of fund balance. Your capital project fund, next column, over a small amount of miscellaneous tech revenue, we spent fifty-three thousand on highway park and storm sore projects. You transferred in a hundred and twenty-one thousand from the general fund to help cover the deficit that existed from the previous year, along with additional costs. And then the year and sixteen thousand dollars of fund balance. The next column is your debt service fund. You levy a tax, you make principal and interest payments on village debt. This does not include any utility. So the village, uh, lending two hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars of taxes, you pay two hundred and fifty-five thousand in principal and interest. Um, you used up the balance that you had as when you gave the year and had a small deficit as of the end of the year. Just encourage you to take care of that during twenty twenty, really, I'm sorry, twenty one four by either, uh, perhaps having access, loving or transferring the money. The next column is tip three, thirteen thousand dollars of revenue, that's Ekerman, um, that was being generated currently. There was three hundred and twenty thousand dollars of expenses. A portion of that, two hundred thousand, is, uh, street work that was done. Um, they also, uh, had principal and interest on kid-related debt during the year, which we pointed to all the a hundred and twenty of that figure. Um, you had some other sources, a hundred and fifteen thousand dollar revenue that related to lot sales, and ultimately ended the year at a positive twelve thousand, uh, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars to fund balance. Uh, the last column there is the lab, uh, again, another new fund during the year, forty-one thousand dollars of revenue, thirty-six thousand, and that came from your Argo fund. So you transferred thirty-six out of Argo, uh, and into this one to help, uh, start that, uh, project, spent fifty-five thousand and had a deficit as of the end of the year, thirteen thousand. Again, uh, looking to cover that twenty-five four, uh, I mean, uh, either a transfer or a. On the next page are the remaining two funds of knowledge. This is your water sewer utilities. Uh, just a couple items to know. When we look at, we look at this in comparison to previous year activity, a water utility had five hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars of revenue in twenty twenty-three. That's up roughly a hundred and thirty-three thousand over the previous year. Um, in twenty twenty-three, there was the contribution of the North Wil- uh, Wilson Street project, and that comes through as revenue and gets capitalized. Uh, those assets get capitalized in the water utility. So it was an unusual fluctuation and only occurs in years when that type of contribution happens. Um, four hundred and twenty-seven thousand of expenses, um, that is down forty-five thousand over the previous year. So overall, water added a hundred and forty-five thousand in that position. Ended the year at three million of that position. Unlike fund balance, that position is not a close representation in cash. That position includes all your assets, so all of your equipment, your water tower, your mains, um, less any related debt, where fund balance isn't accounted for in that same methodology. So three million dollars above that position as of the end of the year. Water utility had four hundred and seventy-four thousand in cash, which is all unrestricted. That is a small decrease in cash, roughly forty-eight hundred dollars over twenty twenty-two. Um, and even with that, um, small increase in cash, you actually spent a hundred and eight thousand on capital, using cash on hand. So you had a a, a good cash flow position in your water utilities that allowed you to, um, to use, uh, some bonds on hand to cover, um, some capital items. The last column then is your sewer utility, seven hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars of revenue, relatively consistent with the, the previous year. There was some outlier, um, discharge, uh, statewide discharge permit revenue and some insurance payments that ran through, uh, that fund, along with some increase in investment incomes, roughly twenty thousand dollars. Uh, expenses were eight hundred and ninety thousand, up roughly seventy thousand over the previous year, um, really in the form of wages, purchase power, chemical, all of those are seen increased costs. So overall, the sewer utility saw an increase in that position of point six thousand. That compares to a decrease last year of sixteen thousand, so relatively consistent in grand scheme of things. Ended the year at two point four million of that position. Uh, eight hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars of cash within the sewer utility as of the end of the year. Roughly half of that is restricted, though. Sewer uh, utility is required at the replacement fund. Uh, so those monies can only be used for required replacement, and that's roughly four hundred and seventy-five thousand. Uh, so sewer utility saw a decrease in cash of two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars over twenty twenty-two, and again, a, a good portion, three hundred and fifty-eight thousand of their cash was spent on capital items uh, during twenty twenty-three. Uh, lastly then, on the final page of the report, um, as part of the audit process, you'd be issued a report in the input of the document, um, that you have reported with the solid green cover. Uh, that document will utilize to communicate comments and recommendations, material weaknesses, uh, future gazes, uh, some standard communication that we need to have with you. Uh, I wouldn't, uh, say that there's anything unusual or unexpected, and now we continue to have segregation of duties. Uh, comment related, just, uh, regarding segregating the duties within the, the, uh, finance area and making sure that there are multiple individuals involved in each of the process, and there's some recommendations or areas that, uh, for consideration, and we'll work with management during the remainder of this year to see what, if any of those can be addressed. Uh, we also communicate a material weakness regarding financial preparation. We, as your auditors, prepared your audited financial statements. That is not unusual or unexpected. Um, in doing that, you really need to look at the cost benefit of having additional resources on staff or available to do that. Um, so typically that, uh, cost benefit is not there. We do do material journaling, which is a part of the audit process, and that is also a portion of that material weakness. Um, a couple other comments that were included in the, um, letter this year that have already been, uh, rectified, uh, from the standpoint of um, looking at local reconciliations and doing some cleanup of some outstanding items, um, just making sure that they're properly handling the system. Uh, so we writing work with Melissa to to resolve some of those issues. Um, journal entries and related support, we recommend that all of those documents are maintained intact, so that when somebody wants to see why a journal entry was done and that information is available, and the system appears to have started in that area. And then just looking at the, uh, various budget information that's included within, of course, and, um, maintaining the integrity of that from your original effective budget, reflecting any amendments, and, uh, again, the initial measures are put a process in place to track that uh, type of modification. So hopefully, uh, for twenty twenty-four, uh, before mapping any, um, concerns with that. Um, lastly, as I mentioned again, a portion of that report is our recorded communication, often before we're there. We need to highlight the journal entries that are done as part of the audit process. Feel free to look at it with a dear convenience. And then the last paragraph on that page, I do include I contact information, happy to speak with many of you regarding any of this information or what you do or don't do, which I'm happy to go over it with you, so please feel free to reach out. Uh, but at this point, I'd be happy to entertain any comments that you might have or questions you may have regarding, uh, the information.
On bank orders holders, um, on a regular basis, do spot checks on municipalities that they own funds for, or that they are?
Not that I remember. Cause that data is posted on your site, uh, through the audit, it's with it, so that your audit is in permission, of course, I would assume that they look at it.
Oh, I'm certain. Yeah, do they, uh, do they consider dipping under what you promised your minimums were gonna be for like eight years or something? Is that a consequential move or?
I would think that that potentially could be, uh, seen as a negative if you would decide that you're gonna go up to the market and you're driving a discussion bonds this past year, um, and I'm sure they looked at that as part of their rating and ultimately, uh, determining the interest rate was a great on that. Um, but I don't think as long as it's been rectified and resolved in the other place to do so, I think that's seen as a positive ultimately.
Do you have any other questions, Wendy? Well, as always, we certainly appreciate all the work that you do on helping us maintain our financials and everything in the village. So thank you very much. And I, yep, I do encourage anybody that does have questions to reach out. That's what she's got her information there for, uh, and well, that wrote up you have them. All right, we are going to move on. Uh, I realized that I skipped public comments, so oops, let's go back to that. Um, if there are any public comments, please note that the comments are limited to five minutes per person, and it should be involving anything that is not currently on the agenda. If you have anything that you want to talk about that's not on the agenda, please step up the microphone, state your name for the clerk to record your name, and, uh, you'll have your five minutes to say your piece. All right, hearing none, we will continue on then. Next, we have, uh, report on village committees. The only one that we have to report on this time is the planning commission. So the planning commission met, I wanted to say it was on the fifth, if I'm not mistaken. Hold on, I'm bringing it up here. All right, so the planning commission met on August fifth, and we had two things on the agenda. The first one was, um, a public hearing regarding the outdoor storage that was uh, submitted by Joel Nyhoff for the Noines Lumber. Um, I guess to, to kind of rehash that, he is looking to put some storage racking on the, be the east side of his property, the southeast side of his property, and we had to go through a public hearing for that because, um, it was a it was a conditional use permit essentially. So we had the public hearing, there were no comments, the planning commission ultimately decided to approve it. And then as part of that, or something similar, I should say, we also set a public hearing to, um, have an ordinance amendment related to how these, um, conditional use permits come before us, because currently, how we're doing them, uh, they come before us to ask us about it as a planning commission, but it really should be before the.
Sorry, Dan.
It's okay.
Can you back up a little bit?
Yeah, no problem. Talking about the conditional use permits, uh, the post ordinance change, yes.
As part of our process in processing, um, Mr. Nyhoff's conditional use permit, we realized that our current appeals process, should he have been denied that permit, um, was to appeal to the village board. It's no longer the case. They should be appealing to the circuit court, and this ordinance change is basically a housekeeping thing, um, but the process, um, starts with the plan commission, uh, public hearing. Uh, once the plan commission makes a recommendation, it comes to the village board, um, and that will be its usual to meeting process as we move towards.
Perfect, thank you for that. You said it much more elegantly than I would have. I'm just like.
I was, I was careful because, um, trustee Frank noted, um, a mistake on the upcoming meetings portion of our agenda. Uh, I made this before, um, we had set the public hearing for the appeal, or I'm sorry, to the, um, ordinance change. So the plan commission set the public hearing for September ninth, not September second.
Perfect.
So I'm sorry about that.
That's, that's okay, no problem. I was just gonna mention the fact that that public hearing will be on the ninth, so we would have gotten there anyway, but so anybody that's interested and wants to come listen to the planning commission, talk about that. All right, other than that, are there any questions from anybody on the planning commission? Excellent, then we will move on to report on operations of the village. I really don't have much of anything. I, we had an election this past week, which was my first time being a poll worker, which was a lot of fun, so I enjoyed it. So thank you, everybody that came out to do it. Um, looking forward to November, and I think it's gonna be, it's gonna be a lot of fun. It's gonna be a good time. So it's gonna be a lot busier than the one that was here this, this past week, but, uh, really looking forward to it. So thank you to all those who are involved, and I will move on if there's no questions of me and my limited things that I have said to the village administrator.
Sure thing. Uh, first off, uh, Kruštek Construction continues on and on and on down the industrial parks. We're excited to see them continuing to move. Their plan was to, I believe, start utilities this week. Eric, did they get to that yet?
Monday.
Monday, yeah. Uh, but utilities are getting in there very soon, which is exciting. Um, along with that, uh, many of our businesses are developers that are planned, uh, to go in the industrial park are now starting to do that outreach of, of asking questions, meeting with our commercial inspector, um, sending us some site plan, um, ideas. So we appreciate, uh, their, their work on that as well. Um, for those in the public that, uh, that are interested, PWSB, they're starting their construction this week. Uh, and then they are, they're set to complete in April. So until then, they're gonna have a trailer that I heard is got, got moved there in front of their bank, and that's where they're gonna be working at it for a while. It'll be a long process for them, but we look forward to seeing their new remodel when it's all finished up next year. Uh, President Gerke and I, we visited Dollar General. Not only did we declare them the business of the month, but they were also, uh, celebrating their one-year anniversary here in Predonia, obviously making a huge impact so far. Uh, the, we just heard about the twenty twenty-three audits. Well, we're already starting with the twenty twenty-five budget, uh, process. The finance committee has, uh, their first meeting on all that next Tuesday to review the C I P, get a high-level, um, start on our budget. So I appreciate all the department heads working with us to get that going. In regards to public safety and infrastructure, obviously, the joint ALS paramedic program has taken up, uh, much of our time with various meetings and, um, commitments as well. We held our first public meeting, uh, which I was able to zoom in on, and it sounded like it went in very well. Uh, it was, it was decently attended, positive feedback, and I hope that helps guide your discussions later tonight. Uh, PTS Contractors continues work on Highland Construction. They are finishing up their water main installations, which is the big chunk of what they're doing right now, and they're continuing to be, um, on point, uh, throughout, throughout this summer in order to be able to have access by the school season. So we appreciate them for being prompt on that. Um, you guys have heard about the ATV UTV ordinance, which many of you are here for as well. Um, so our team has been working on that item, which we'll be discussing later on. I'm gonna give a huge shout out to our clerk, of course, and all of our election workers on a successful election. Um, it was, it was a smooth process streamlined. We got people in and out, and we had uh, successful, uh, numbers at the end of the night. Um, moving on, um, just a, a shout out for those in the community who don't know, and I know it's, I'm gonna switch my hats here with my town role here, uh, but the town of Predonia was recently awarded a one-point-eight million dollar grant, uh, for Belgium Cola Road. And so while that's not necessarily in the village itself, it's certainly something we should be proud of as a community for all of the agricultural traffic that moves in and out, not only the village, but of the surrounding town as well. So huge kudos to the town for that. Um, in my last section here, uh, Tuesday tunes, we have one more coming up on August twenty-seventh, which we're really excited for. Um, so if you have not been to a Tuesday tunes event yet, they've been a lot of fun. Come on out, hang out with us, grab some drinks, eat some food, and have a good old time. Uh, we conducted our second annual, uh, Midonia Kids Month Run. We talked, uh, talked about that, uh, at the previous meeting, uh, but I'll just give kudos again to all the volunteers and staff, everybody who helped to bring that together. And then finally, uh, the PWSB Splashdown continues to, uh, come together with various donations. If you haven't donated yet, there's still time to get those donations in. We are, uh, really at the point where we are reaching out to local contractors and getting collecting bids for next year. And so we're hoping that, uh, by getting those, those, uh, firm bids in, getting the materials quote from CRS, I'll be able to come to you guys very fairly soon to say, hey, we're ready to get a shovel in the ground and build this next year. Um, so again, very excited for our community. Thank you to all the donors who've been able to be a part. We look forward to getting that done for you next year. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you very much. Do, do we have any questions of our village administrator?
I do.
Yep.
How, how far are we, uh, from reaching our target?
So.
For donations on the, on these splash, splash project.
Based off of the original quotes, we're about forty-five thousand away, but where we can close those gaps is by getting those firm numbers for installation, right? So if we quoted, I don't know, like, if it was ten thousand for electric, right, and Sippel comes back to us and says, well, we can do it for two, right? That's gonna lower the amount of monies that we need. So tentatively, it's about forty-five thousand, but I hope that once we get those firm bids, then I'll be able to give you a more firm answer of how much more, if any, we need to close the gap.
Okay.
On the industrial park, I know weather has caused a lot of delays. How delayed are we at this point?
They are actually pretty caught up. So I believe we got, uh, email, or email Eric with it October eighteen, eleventh, that they said they were gonna be able to get their phases done. Uh, we were pushing for an earlier finish because at the time, many of our developers wanted to get in there sooner. But having conversations with those developers, even the soonest ones are not planning to construct until spring anyway, so that it's not affecting their, their schedule.
Uh, it was the twenty-seventh, am I right?
Twenty-seventh.
Yep.
That's also the last school.
Correct. All right.
Go to one and then come finish with us.
Let's hope, right? All right, any other questions for village minister? One once, going twice, we will move on to the village marshal.
I thought there were gonna be a lot of people.
It's a fair amount.
Good evening. I hope you should have, uh, both my June and July month reports. Uh, June, obviously, the focus was the hundred and fiftieth anniversary. I pleased to report that that went smoothly. There were no negative, non-forceful issues, and everything seemed to go according to plan. Uh, also saw beginning of our hiring process for our next marshal, uh, which leads us into June, uh, July. Uh, obviously, a big event for us in July was the, uh, the process of getting, you know, certified and background checks and everything, and uh, our ranking was Marshall Tom, as you know, is now here. Uh, he's filling one of our two open slots, and I'm projecting to fill the other one later this year after Tom is slowly up and running. Uh, if you notice sitting there, I did do the unusual step of mentioning a park complaint that we've been dealing with. I did that for a very specific reason. Uh, we've been getting nothing but complaints about this particular camper for better part of three months now, and a couple of you have already gotten complaints, and um, instead of explaining it to two of you one at a time, I figured I'd just include all of them because I suspect more complaints are coming. Uh, this involves a nineteen ninety-six job, your camper, uh, belongs to a resident in one, one of our apartment buildings, and it first got on our radar, parked down Stone Creek, down on the corner there. Uh, and she does not have a report in her apartment building. Uh, promise she leaves it there for months. Uh, we get, or we get calls of being abandoned, the people living out of it. It's clearly in violation of the village parking ordinance. Uh, I've spoken with her verbally. She's got good warnings, issued parking tickets, and recently, because the problem has persisted, uh, we resorted to kind of our top tier, because I don't have a tier higher than that. That's the issue of, of traffic difference. Now, that may have finally got things done because the camper is now down, while we don't have apartment. However, whether it stays there or not, it may be back, as I said, so if you get the calls, we are working on it for trying our best. Uh, I've tried to see if she could get storage options and such, and still we're in progress.
Well, we appreciate your work on it, and at least it's currently at a campground.
It's currently at a campground.
Campers.
I haven't gotten a call from the park ranger yet asking what's, what's up with it, so.
Excellent. Well, I, like I said, I thank you for your work on that because, yeah, you know, I've had some complaints. I've had multiple people calling me, somebody saying, oh, I didn't know that we live, let people live on the streets, and it's like, okay, we don't, um, so.
You have a regular park, Michelle State.
I think so. Do, do you block off a certain time to respond to this?
I have to say, unfortunately, because you've given, basically given us press, um, with your update and your email, um, in how to respond to these residents, because we, at the office, want to address their concern as well. And there's only so much that you have the teeth to do.
So thank you for that. Are there any other comments from Marshall Lee?
I didn't notice in here that complaints are way down from last year. I mean, that's good to see.
Um, complaints are, but we are going halfway through. Um, complaints are, but we are going halfway through here and it does vary. Uh, we also are currently two officers down here, so it has affected our hours as well. Uh, that, uh, myself, the village administrator, been going through the budget, route, budget process for next year. And we fully anticipate we'll be back up to full staff next year where we shouldn't be, our hours should be where they should be. And, and I suspect that, that just the fact that our hours have been down because our staffing is that late is a contributor to that as well.
And rain over it.
And the weather, I mean, it's never an exact science to begin with. Uh, I could have, no, I was, I could have a day where I can't find anything, driving around. Drove nothing's going on. You can have a day where it's just call, 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 and it's, it's not an exact science.
Are you anticipating with schools starting pretty quick here, uh, any additional presence within the village?
I'm looking forward to this. One of the things we started last year was giving the, uh, the ride to the students, the ride to school thing. I enjoy that. I would do that every day of the week if it was arrangeable, so. I'm looking forward to that with, uh, participation.
I did notice the, uh, the speed limit sign, the solar power one on Martin is not operating.
Yes, I just noticed that myself this week, so I'm going to be getting together with, uh, our, our top street department guy, who was back there.
Look at Eric click around like.
Probably the, it, it works on batteries that are recharged, so it probably just, it's a battery.
I would think so. Anything else for Marshall Lee? All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Yep. Okay, we will move on to our fire chief. Are you sure?
Um, so I, they just made, uh, got Michelle our July information. I didn't see that. I think what I said was, so I don't.
No, keep going. One more. Oh, no.
Way to go, Michelle.
Anyways, uh, nothing, nothing really different in June, uh, July. One of the highlights in July was, uh, we had a very busy month in July with ambulants. We had forty-four calls. There are ambulants, which is a lot. Um, year to date, as of July thirty-first, we had two hundred and sixty-six ambulance calls, which is a high number. That's twenty-three ahead of last year, uh, at this time, and we are estimated to be around the four sixty mark of ambulance calls this year. Which is about twenty-five to thirty ahead of our record here. Um, Fire prevention almost set for October thirteenth from ten to one. Uh, paramedic assistance, our paramedic program, um, Gustav had mentioned about listening session that we add here to Belgium Fredonia. Uh, Tuesday night, this past Tuesday night, I went down to Belgium Park Department and did the presentation for them. Uh, and then followed that on Tuesday night and come back here to Fredonia to do it for our own department, going through the slide presentation. Customize the slide presentation for an inconsistency a little bit because everything is a little bit different. Um, and then, um, still Belgium Board, uh, Belgium, Belgium Board, uh, had a meeting last night that their party problem members went to and they put together some frequently asked questions, some talking points that we are collaborating together on and putting something together for interviews. Um, yeah, that's it.
Excellent. Thank you, uh, for being there for that listening session. It was very informative and I think it gave us a lot of information that's really going to help us with our decision tonight and moving forward. So I just want to say thank you again for everything.
And it's continuously, it is work in progress.
Yep.
Building is frequently asked questions every, every time in the presentation we go through and writing out questions that people are asking, what are the answers? So we can all have that before talking.
Absolutely. And moving forward, I mean, you and I have talked about that too. We'll continue doing those listening sessions, not just at nights during the week. I mean, we'll try to do some stuff that's more accessible to other citizens, you know, here, there, anywhere, just to get the word out about, you know, the need and everything else that's going on. So, again, appreciate it. Any questions of our fire chief? All right, we will move on to the public works director. And wastewater treatment plant operator.
What was in your packet? We see, uh, Highland program is going on. Cedar Valley is scheduled for the fifth, for a little overlay. They are going to be starting the water main over, uh, power, starting Monday.
Just one, I guess, question or comment that I had. I, I had a school board or I had the superintendent of the schools reach out to me today and talk to me a bunch, about a bunch of things. One of the things that came up is a question that you and I have discussed earlier, I think this week about the intersection at Martin and Highland. Um, could you just kind of give everybody an update as to when that should be open, if it should be open in time for school, all those different things?
Uh, contractor knows that back at school, I believe there's a football game there Thursday night, uh, the big shoe that they have there in the intersection is kind of a deterrent. Most people go around, so they were asked if they could move that, kind of open that up, so our clear intersection.
Sure.
Uh, Highland will be passable. Always just wherever they're across the road and, you know, like the restaurant right now, they're going to go from, or herself, wherever they're at.
Hmm.
But we're trying to work it.
Yeah, but I mean, you anticipate that intersection being open for the school year?
Yep.
Excellent. Thank you. Anything else for Eric?
Hey Eric, did, uh, did you get anything set up for the water main link up by the bank?
So we are on water main break number four off of that. So we had two, uh, three women out there connected to Highland. One, um, had it going up towards the school and they followed them to Smart, so. And just, we may just connect it to it, so we're trying to get everything fixed.
I think he's asking about the one by the post office, so.
By the post office.
Uh, I believe Tuesday we're going to fix out.
Okay. Did you need, uh, the, any approval on that or did you approve, approve that within the staff?
Uh, within, uh, so there's a hundred and seventy feet where we're looking. And in that hundred and seventy feet, there's two water main breaks previously and we leave a service leave now. So we're going to try and get all that fixed and tear that out there.
And I think as you and I discussed, it's cheaper to do it now while they're there reconstructing stuff than it is to bring it back out and mobilize and do everything else, so.
I just want to make sure that nothing's standing in here. We, we'd be able to do that along with the resident project itself.
Yeah, I'll just jump in quick that we're pretty fortunate that if we remember, you know, we borrowed, it was a one point one million, I think, for this project. And thankfully the bids came in under, so that gives us that little bit of breathing room so that when stuff like this happens, right, we're able to take care of it. So it's great.
All right. Anything else for our public works director, wastewater treatment plant director? We will move on to our village clerk.
The twenty twenty-four equalized value in that construction report came out and we've been working with the DOR and Todd to resolve that error, um, in the TID three evaluation in twenty twenty-three. Additionally, we discovered that the assessment team incorrectly quoted Dollar General, um, value as, um, part of the village wide rebuild and not met his construction. And thank you Les, who worked really quickly to resolve that error of the DOR and we were able to quote it correctly to capture that in the twenty twenty-five cycle. So that's exciting. Um, attorney Woodward and Marshall Lee worked together, um, to interpret state statutes and provide the board with the ordinance, um, for the ATVs and UTVs that you guys can reasonably enforce and to provide as much supporting information as possible. We had an election. Um, I wrote that while election's underway and as always, our team was awesome. Um, they're engaged, informed, and you guys were totally prepped to run a clean election. Um, we had, um, a very minor issue with the machine. Um, it, uh, wouldn't take, um, folded, a couple of folded ballots, but we were, we contacted the vendor. We were able to resolve it very quickly and it didn't disrupt the whole thing. So that was super. Um, and we had a thirty-eight percent turnout, five hundred fifty voters. So that was pretty good. Um, the listening session, the paramedic listening session, um, seems like it went well. Um, both Brett and Chief have already talked about that, so, um, and we'll go on about that. Oh, the next one is scheduled for September twenty-fifth. Um, and we also last week got, um, commercial building permits from Corset Technical, Port Washington State Bank and Hateses. Um, so it's exciting to see those projects get underway.
Excellent.
They're rebranding their signs, so they're replacing all their signage. So they have a couple of new illuminated ones, um, and then.
I'll just point out as, as part of the write-up from our clerk, um, during that paramedic listening session, it was kind of, I don't want to say ironic, but there were two paramedic calls that came in, uh, during that session. So, you know, we, as we're just sitting there discussing what we should be doing with this program moving forward. Uh, we had the guys jumping out and going to attend to emergencies. So it's, um, it's, it's pretty fitting and it was kind of, I guess I don't really know what the right, right word was, but it was kind of fitting to see them jump up and, you know, when those radios came on, they were gone and how quickly, quickly they were out there. So, um, we'll talk a little bit more about that later when we're discuss, discussing that, but I just wanted to point that out because those guys are really appreciated within this village and the surrounding communities and, uh, we can't do enough for them. So any other questions for the clerk before we move on? Thank you again for conducting that election and making sure it went so smoothly. All right, we will move on to our treasurer.
All of the reports, you might stop them change very casually.
Do you, this much, you work with numbers. I like it. Um, do you have an update? And I know you and I talked about this, about the LGIP accounts as to interest and how much we've had and all that stuff recently? Yeah. Okay.
Well, it's a lot. Uh, yeah, uh, let's see here. So the, the report that I have in my hand is middle of July, so just something to think about. Um, but general fund investments, we're already at fifty-five thousand. That's halfway through the year, money sitting in our general fund.
This is an interest, correct?
That's just interest. Yeah. Uh, let's see here. Let me flip quick. Yeah, the tit's going to have the rest. Yeah, and then within the TID so far, this is the, yeah, so the TID income, we're at about sixty-one thousand in interest.
In interest.
Um, so no, we're doing very well. That's what you're asking.
That's what, yeah, that's what I'm asking. I just like to point out those numbers because I, I think that it's, it's important to know that we're, you know, as in the treasurer's report and all that stuff, it is just the day-to-day stuff. It's all the same or whatever, but it's the actions that we've done maybe before these meetings that have allowed us to do what we're doing. That is making a huge difference. So I really appreciate that. I just want to keep the board up to date on, um, how our investments are doing because it will be important for our future. Yeah, a lot better than CDs, for sure. All right. Any other questions from our treasurer? Thank you so much. Uh, next we are going to move on to the fun things, um, which are the items for discussion and our action. And the first one that we have, uh, is going to be the introduction of ordinance twenty twenty-four oh four for all terrain vehicle and utility terrain vehicles. I would ask, again, I'm sure there's going to be a lot of discussion about this. Uh, anybody that wants to say anything either for or against, please state your name so that we can look back on our notes, uh, and also so that everybody else that's in attendance on the Zoom call can hear. Um, I think what we'll do, if it's okay with everybody, I think I want to start by the information that our staff has gathered, um, including the marshal's office, you know, the administrator, our attorney and all that stuff and get that, get all that out there. And then we can have, um, comment that comes after that, if that works for everybody. So get us all educated on what everybody found, what everybody's looking at, and then we can have a good firm discussion on. So without further ado, who wants to go first?
I would have our attorney go first. He can go through the draft document that's.
Excellent. Sounds good. Thank you, sir.
Uh, sure. So before you is, uh, what I have drafted, it's similar to what I've had other, uh, communities I work with adopt. Uh, essentially, uh, the shortest way to summarize this is it adopts the regulations that are in state statutes that govern ATVs and UTVs. So if the legislature has said that an ATV or UTV operator must do something or may not do something, uh, this simply adopts it by reference. We don't have to break out all of the different things that they regulate, uh, whether it be operating while under the influence or requirements for certain underage people to wear helmets or requirements that UTV operators have seatbelts. If it's in the state statutes, we're saying we're going to track along with what the state statute, uh, requires. Uh, we're adopting all the definitions that they use. Um, it really is just, uh, following along with what, uh, they say because, uh, my opinion is for the most part, except for a couple of things that the statute lets us do, uh, we have to track along with what state statute, uh, allows. Uh, you'll see on page two, under section two, uh, where it goes through what routes are established. Uh, we are first, uh, this ordinance would establish all village roadways as ATV routes. Once the signage goes up. Again, village roadways doesn't mean a roadway within the village limits. It means a roadway that is actually under village jurisdiction. So in other words, not state highway fifty-seven. That's not a village roadway, uh, not county trunk H, that's not a village roadway. So section A is just talking about the village streets. Uh, section B does allow us to, um, have those county trunk highways within village limits open, but uh, it's subject to the county ordinance because our county board has passed an ATV ordinance that lists, uh, the routes that they want to be open. I expect that if the village passes this ordinance, uh, the club or others interested citizens could go to the county board and request that they amend their ordinance uh, to include the county trunk highways within the village, but that of course is up to the county board. So this simply recognizes that, uh, when it comes to county trunk highways, the county is really in charge of that. We are not. And so it's simply recognizing the fact that if you're on a county trunk highway, uh, you're subject to the county code of ordinances. Uh, it, it seemed, yes.
Um, I'm pretty sure that the department and, and Freedom Avenue is treated differently than the two driving lanes. Because we do maintain that and we have to pay extra if they through the whole street and buy, pay for that part. Um, because that's, um, their jurisdiction and they're worried about the driving.
So under the ordinances, uh, under the, you, under the ATV, UTV regulations, they would have to be operating on the roadway and not operating in a parking lane. So I'm not sure that the parking lane necessarily makes a difference. Um, again, what was in the club's proposal and one of the few things we can do is set, uh, time limitations. So this maintains the eleven PM to five AM, uh, sort of no-go timeframe. Uh, again, that just was something that was in the club's proposal. That is one of the things that the board can regulate, uh, so that is in this draft. Uh, otherwise, uh, all of the restrictions that are in state statute, uh, are adopted by reference. And this does not include any additional restrictions that are not imposed by state statute. There was some discussion about, my understanding is there was some discussion about a driver licensing requirement. Again, my opinion is that because state statute does not require driver's licenses. Uh, in fact, if you sort of follow all of the different state statutes along, it very specifically excludes from the driver licensing requirement, ATVs and UTVs. Especially because it allows people under the age, between the ages of twelve and sixteen, to operate them under certain circumstances. I don't believe we can impose a driver licensing requirement. We can simply follow along with what, uh, the legislature in Madison has decided uh, are the requirements for ATV and UTV operators. Uh, so that's why there's no driver licensing requirement here. Likewise, there's no liability insurance requirement here. Because the state statute about liability insurance, uh, adopts the definition of motor vehicle, state statutes. And the definition of motor vehicle in the state statutes expressly excludes ATVs and UTVs. So again, I think if there was going to be a liability insurance requirement for ATVs and UTVs, uh, our legislature in Madison would have to adopt that and make that part of the statutes that apply to these. I don't believe we can impose that on our own because it would directly conflict with state statute. If there are any other questions about the draft ordinance or any of the restrictions or regulations that are included or not included. If there are any other questions about the draft ordinance or any of the restrictions or regulations that are included or not included, I am more than happy.
We have. Further discussions and questions, but do we have anything right offhand that we would like to ask?
Sure, I can sort of give you as a high level overview of how OWI works with respect to ETVs and UTVs if uh, you'd like. Uh. It's essentially a whole different category of OWI. So in other words, if you get uh, nine OWIs in your car. And then you get an OWI on an ATV, that's your first OWI in your ATV. So that is treated as a first offense, non criminal violation. If you get a second offense OWI within five years on an ATV or UTV, that is now a crime because it's your second one on an ATV or UTV. So it's actually essentially a totally siloed off category. If you get an OWI on an ATV or UTV, it does not count towards your driver's licensing total for getting them in a car. Two totally separate things. Uh, it also doesn't result in any driver's licensing penalties if you get one on an ATV or UTV. Because there's no driver's licensing requirement for an ATV or UTV. Um, there's a forfeiture. Essentially a fine you have to pay and you have to be ordered to undergo an assessment. Those are the penalties for a first defense on an ATV or UTV. There's a criminal charge if there's an OWI that causes injury to someone. Um, you know homicide by intoxicated use of an ATV or UTV, those can be criminal charges, but otherwise just sort of a garden variety. You get pulled over for impaired driving on an ATV or UTV. It's a traffic site or not a traffic citation. It's a natural resources citation. Just like any other violation on an ATV or UTV would be.
So. With the following of the state statutes, I know, you know, Belgium, I know there's many other communities that have adopted, you know, some of the things that the. Club have put in their proposal. How did they go about doing that? What makes us? What makes the village of Pudonia different than what they're doing?
I mean, there there isn't anything different other than I don't represent those communities, so they didn't get my advice on it. I don't think those portions, if there are additional restrictions in other communities ordinances. If they were challenged, I don't believe they would be enforceable in court is the sh- short answer I could.
Are there other questions of our attorney? Mm hmm.
Sure, you could. You all can set that to whatever you want to.
Now, we wanted to. Say, um, your.
My only question is, uh, the extent to which you're posting that on signage. I think generally speaking, some of those time restrictions are posted on signage, so it would become more different, difficult. If you're, you know, changing that. Certain days, that sort of thing, but I would sort of leave that to to your discretion in terms of how you want to set that. If it's literally the same day every year, if it's, you know, eleven PM to five AM, except on the Fourth of July or something that. Would pretty easily go on a sign. That might be one thing, but.
I think you're thinking of like, if we do an event at a park, right? We adjust our our noise ordinance, right? For for things like that, so. What on? Yeah.
I think I'll have more questions that I'd like to make from Marshall.
Yep. So that's what I was gonna say. So I wanted to, I want to make sure that we got anything answered that we needed to ask the attorney and then we'll go on to. Um, our marshal and then we will open it up for everybody to talk. Any other questions right offhand? All right, I'm gonna move on to Marshall lead, the marshal's office, and I'd like to hear his opinion and um, ask questions for his opinion as well.
Thank you. I think I'll stay here for this one. Um. If it wasn't immediately obvious by the four pages I submitted, I went through a long process in my head. Becoming like. Uh, as I said, full disclosure, I'm an ATV user myself. Uh, I have, I I'm not opposed to the concept. However, this is an accommodation and I think if the villagers allow this accommodation, it has to be on our terms. Uh, when I first started the process, I reviewed the uh, the proposal from the ATV club and I was very impressed. Oh, it's a, it's a, it's a very thoughtful proposal. It has a lot of, I think, important protections. That would benefit this, the citizens of Pudonia. And and I I felt it was something that was important. As I indicated in my notes, I felt there were a few things that I would add to that. Um, most specifically, uh, again, I was impressed. I like I like the insurance restriction. Uh, I like the restriction on open intoxicants. I've been a police officer for thirty years. Uh. Alcohol in vehicles, and I don't care what kind of vehicle, it doesn't mix. It's a bad idea. I've spent my career dealing with the cops. Um, I like the open intoxication requirement in the uh, or prohibition prohibition in the. ATV club's proposal. Uh, I would add a license restriction, and I mentioned that for two very specific reasons. The most specific one is one of the biggest complaints I've gotten. Uh, both from citizens and what I've seen on some of their social media about this. Is the concerns that uh, a a convicted drug driver would use the ATV old ordinance to get around. Uh, penalties. Uh, for example, a second or third offense drunk driver who's had his license taken away, it's going to be taken away for years. Uh, without a specific license restriction, could get in an ATV and drive legally on our roads. Thus, getting around the penalties. The state of Wisconsin took away their ability to operate on our roads for a reason. And I was somewhat hesitant uh, to open up the possibility that they could get get around it. Um, I I did find, and I mentioned to what I believe the city and that for and several others did include a prohibi- a prohibition in their ordinance. That required the operator to have a valid driver's license. Uh, in addition to addressing that potential issue, I also felt that. You know, operating an ATV on the roads isn't like operated on the trails of the park. Uh, and and some degree of familiarity and experience. Uh, sharing the road with motor vehicles comes with having a driver's license. So I felt there was a secondary benefit there as well. Uh. The second thing I would uh, capacity to consider uh, would be whether or not we wanted to order the entire village up. Uh, the biggest concern I have is with Pudonia. As I mentioned in my reports, it is a high traffic road. It is one of only four. Of the primary east west corridors in Osaka, Kowabunga, and it gets a lot of commercial. And out of town traffic. We already get complaints of driving, we get complaints of speeding, we get complaints of high traffic. And I'm somewhat reluctant to add it more into that equation. Uh, so I would ask the board to maybe consider whether or not they want to look at it more restrictive rather series of routes uh, as far as that. However, then things kind of went off the rail for me after a conversation with the village attorney. Uh, I was somewhat surprised to discover that uh, many of these things look like they may not be enforceable. Uh, that creates a new trouble for me. Uh, I believe a lot of these these requirements are necessary. To protect the safety of our citizens. Um, and when I look at this, I don't have the luxury of looking at. Responsible ATV or UTV owners. If I can borrow one of uh, my my cohort here's lines from earlier. If if everyone driving an ATV or UTV was part of the uh. Part of the ATV club that made this presentation, I would be a lot less worried about it. But that isn't the case. And I have to try to build a recommendation based upon like unresponsible. The ones that were going to abuse this or or use this in an appropriate ways. And and the fact that we can't. Uh, we can't put restrictions in here that I think are necessary is troubling to me. And I I would, I I was asked maybe if maybe some more advocacy needs to be done. Maybe not on the local level here by these ATV clubs, but with the state legislature. Will at least get some of these restrictions in place as attorney Whitworth said. Uh, on a state level, or at least clear up the question I raised about whether or not these are actually enforceable or not. Either one would suffice for our purposes, but I think there's some advocacy that needs to be done yet on the state level. Uh, before I think I can safely recommend this for that reason. Uh, as I said, you know, I have to look at worst case scenarios and if if I'm being told that a. A third offense drunk driver, convicted third offense drunk driver. Um. With uh, no valid license until year, you know, twenty eighteen. Uh, can get in his new TV uh, and drive down the streets uh. Without any insurance and crack open a can of beer on his way to the local tavern. From a law enforcement perspective, that's a problem. And I think that just from 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 that perspective. I can't come to the conclusion yet, or I can support this.
All right. What questions do we have of our village marshal?
I think it's kind of twofold for me for both Marshall and the lawyer. Uh, how do we? How do we collaborate and come together on this? And is there a way that we can amend that with me?
I mean, in terms of amending the regulations, like like Marshall lead said, I think a lot of these regulations need to be amended by the legislature in Madison. If those are the ones that are the sticking point. For you. I mean, I can tell you that there have been bills in the legislature. I think the past, I know at least this past session, I think. The one before that too. To basically add the open intoxicant statute into what applies to ATVs and UTVs, and those bills died in the legislature. They did not pass. Um, so at least that aspect of it has had some attention at the legislative level, but I don't know. What the reason is why those haven't um, been successful in moving forward. Because again, it's a relatively easy change. There is a statute which we this draft ordinance adopts by reference. Um, in the traffic code. That says, you know, these specific statutes in the traffic code apply to ATVs and UTVs, and there's a whole list of. And it's things about um. You know, obeying traffic officers directions and right of way and all sorts of things in the traffic code that apply the same to cars. And it very specifically says only these sections apply to ATVs and UTVs. And notably absent from that one is the open intoxicant statute. So I think if the legislature wants to change it, they need to amend that section to to put that in there. So I really think it's getting our. Elected representatives in Madison in here to let them know about. Um, your concerns and the same for the clubs that that do this. If this is the hangup. Um, those are things that I think need to be addressed um, in Madison. But the problem is just as the same as we can't. Um. Impose different licensing requirements for people that drive cars. We can't impose different licensing requirements for people that drive ATVs and UTVs. Those are a matter of state statute.
I think that and and you know, in a bit here, we'll comment on this. I'll wait just a bit for the club to comment on this, but. I think that what surprises me more than anything is you have. You have a lot of these municipalities around here that have adopted this ordinance. Uh, with very similar language. And again, I'd be very curious to hear in a little bit, um. What their council and what their marshal's office and all that because because. Enforceable and or could be enforceable and not enforceable are two different things, right? So that's where I would be kind of curious to know. The other opinions that came from the other municipalities on that. And I guess twofold, um, my other comment would just be. We already have people here on ATVs, right? I mean. Think I'm not mistaken in saying that there is a ride your, you know, tractor to school thing that happens every single year, and there's people that come through on ATVs on that as well. Lawn mowers, right? So there is all sorts of different things like that. So where I understand, I understand your concern. About the opening toxikins and I understand about your concern about the non licensees and you know, who's it going to bring out of the woodwork to do it? I have a feeling those people are doing it anyway. That's just kind of my my point and I, and that would be one of the things that I, one of my comments, I guess.
I think it it might be helpful if either the marshal or the attorney could walk us through. So if we did have a stricter ordinance, right? Well, what would you, could you walk us through that procedure of, you know, writing the ticket, who it goes to, and who would make that decision on whether it's, you know. Enforceable or not.
Well, let me give you an example to to use the marshals uh, example of someone whose driver's license was revoked or, you know. Could even be just one OWI. Driving on a revoked license due to an OWI is normally a criminal charge. So that would be something. Where you're placing someone under arrest, taking him to the jail, referring a request for charges to the DA's office. Again. I think what would happen is the DA would then have to look at the state statute for operating while revoked. The definition of operating while revoked is operating a motor vehicle. You then look at the definition in the state statute of what is a motor vehicle. And the state statute says a motor vehicle is a self propelled vehicle, except excluding. ATVs, UTVs, and a few other things. And I think the district attorney would say. I I can't charge this person with a crime of operating while revoked. Because they weren't operating something that the law defines as a motor vehicle. And as a result. Whether their operating privilege was revoked, it doesn't matter because they weren't operating a motor vehicle. That would then leave us with writing a municipal citation under an ordinance that you would pass, saying you have to have a driver's license. And then that defendant or their attorney would say, would come to court, plead not guilty and say. You can't do this. My conflicts with state statute. And then we'd have to litigate over whether or not it was valid. And then you're also running the risk that because you had a custodial arrest, that they could file a lawsuit for wrongful arrest, saying, you know, you. Uh, you know, restrained my liberty and placed me into custody for an offense that you should have known you couldn't actually arrest me for.
Yeah, and and I understand that. I guess, you know. I my, again, my comment is if we, and maybe this sounds naive, but. If we don't pass an ordinance, we say, I'm sorry, this isn't going to happen. Those people are still going to be out there doing it regardless. And I don't, and I don't think any, you know, it's just like. Telling people that drunk driving is wrong. I mean, people still do it, right? Right. So it. And I know in this case, it's, you know, you can't, you know, you couldn't enforce it or whatever, but. I just think that there's, there's people out there that are doing it anyway, and there's going to be people out there that are going to continue to do it. As well, you know, call trick or treating, whatever. I mean, we could, unless we sit there and we just. Hammer them every single time, you know. So again, I'm, I've said before, I'm. Neither passionate one way or another. I'm just, I'm kind of pointing out the things that I see and, you know, the other responses that are going to be from other citizens as well. So it's unfortunate that, um. You know, a few people could ruin a good thing. That would be awesome for a bunch of of a whole club and everything. So. What are the?
If I could maybe in response to uh, Philmy's question, um. I I I really do kind of see this at this point as an advocacy issue with the state. Uh, there is some ambiguity here. I think I mentioned it in there, and then again, that's a problem. We would all agree, I think, that there is. So uh, so what we're doing as well, I think there is no such thing as seven law. But the questions are trouble. Uh, I spoke today with uh, a lieutenant from sheriff's department in some perspective on this, and they don't know what to do with this. Uh, they're trying to figure out what they want to do in regards to county by ordinance, but they're kind of in the same ballgame as well. They don't know. Really, a lot of these questions. Or where these things are going to go. That's a problem. I I I don't think this is shovel ready yet. I think there's some work and and this is just my perspective. And again, I would see. I have to base my recommendation on worse case scenarios. Uh, that that simply is the reality of my life. Uh, but I I think there's some advocacy that needs to go on a state level. That will substantially clear this up either. If these things are important, and clearly you and the ATV club thinks that these are important because they included a lot of them in their proposal. Um. And if these are important, I think it's got to start as the state legislature. The state legislature either needs to clear this up themselves. Or they need to give us the ability to do it. But since we are making the accommodation. Uh. I think you should have the ability to. I think you should have the ability to put restrictions in that we think will work as a safety of our citizens.
I'd like to know, and this might be a question for the club as you guys have, you know, proposed this to many boards, is how are other communities enforcing some of this stuff? We put the, you had put the, the limitations and everything in the proposal, which we think is great. But how did, how does Belgium enforce it? How does random lay? How does, you know, Tom Sockville, you know, our local communities around her that have adopted this? What are they doing and how are they supporting this? And what are we seeing from those communities?
Right. And just give, give me a few. I just, I will get to you. I promise. I just want to make sure that we can answer, ask any other questions of Marshall and then we'll go, we'll go for that because that's going to be very important. Uh, Kurt, do you have anything?
I gue- I guess that would be my question is, is that uh, all these other jurisdictions have uh, enacted ATV, UTV ordinances? And they have the same dilemma.
Yep.
So I mean, they were courageous enough to uh, to do it. And I don't, I mean, I just don't see a problem.
And, and I think.
It's not a question, but I guess it's more of a comment.
Yeah. And I think I, you know, I'd go.
Law is going to violate the law, like you said, too. It's going to happen. I mean.
What? I would just go to, I'm reading right now. I'm just reading the end of um, Marshall Lee's recommendation. And he talks about if we decided we still wanted to do this regardless, um, he would still recommend including additional restrictions, uh, license restriction outline above and the routes. And he says, I'd give two reasons. A theory that they aren't enforceable is legally untested as far as we know. And I consider them important enough that I'd be willing to try. Um, there's many municipalities that do have these additional restrictions. Secondly, I do think there's a preventative value in simply having them in there, especially if they are laid out in a clear manner that the ATV club has proposed or proposal has them. So is it your feeling that if something were to happen that you would? Am I reading that right and saying that you think that it'd be something that you would try to enforce?
Again, I, and Attorney Woodward, I'm going to look at this. It's not testing. Uh, before I go down that road, I do want to stress, I have great people's respect for Attorney Woodward.
Yep.
He's a good attorney and I think you would ignore his advice at, at our parent.
Yep.
Um, but it is legally untested, which is why I think if it were me, I would want that language. And again, we get that open intoxicant. I would try writing the ordinance tickets and it would go through our court process and we'll see what we see.
Yep.
But again, I want to stress that there is no guarantees on that. Yeah.
Right.
And I trust Attorney Woodward.
Absolutely. I just wanted to.
Yeah. And I would just mention the town of Sockville and town of Port Washington do not have uh, the driver's licensing requirement in their ordinance. And I'll give you one guess who their town attorney is.
Gee, I wonder.
But they have passed, you know, ATV ordinances and obviously neither of those communities has their own police department. So they just follow, you know, fall under uh, sheriff or if there would happen to be a state trooper or DNR warrant out on the road. And I'm not specifically aware of any
Yeah.
issues they've had in those communities, but obviously very different dealing with a denser village type environment than, you know, the more rural environments you have in those two communities.
And I, I just want to stress, I'm not, I'm not trying to undermine the quality of work that you guys do. And I just, I'm just answering or asking the questions that are coming to my head. So I sincerely appreciate the stuff that you guys do. And I mean, keeping our community safe and giving a sound legal advice. So.
Attorney Woodward, ourselves are part of a big asking each other these questions as well.
Right.
And I'd like to just give a quick shout out to Marshall Lee. Uh, we had a very long conversation to most of us during the day before. Uh, and it was very enlightening for myself. Um, and I definitely appreciated the time that he took explaining things to me and talking through his decision and you know, what his proposal meant and all of that. So thank you both for taking the time to go through all of this, single promotion, but making sure that we're doing right for the village too.
Anybody else want to comment?
I'd like to just mention that. When we're talking about, well, okay, I would, I would do this and we go through the process and whatever, we're very this is going to sound hard and force and whatever, but we've already spent, spent, I've spent in a neighborhood with time and, and whatever, somewhere around three thousand dollars where we got to where we're sitting here tonight. Um, you take this to, I don't know, to a circuit court or where um, the next, the next court, by the time you get up to the appeals process, you might have a hundred fifty thousand dollars in trying to manage this point very easily. And who's going to do this? Are we going to spend that kind of money as a board? To make a point, can we afford to? Is our insurance going to pay for that? No. I mean, that's very hard to tell us. But we have our citizens to worry about and they need to guard their streets and roads, stuff like that. Um, it's just something I can't stand up is you have a number of villages in the areas. I don't know why it is that you feel that you have to have Fridonia's streets also to make your playground. Cause that's just what you're doing. If you're not coming in and you're going to a gas station fill up or going to someone's house that you know, or some if, if you're just driving around, it's it's, it's recreation. I probably mentioned something that you prepared to answer, so I'll wait for that answer when we return.
So would you also close out streets to mopeds or motorcycles or bicycles or e-bikes or rollerbladers?
I haven't researched that as our attorney. The worst case scenario in my mind is some other going to the street picking up what's left of my little daughter that got ran over, not by any of these people. But by idiots out there, you see them on the trail with reckless abandon. They come screaming at you around the corner. No fear of death and no, they don't care, whatever. You see them if you're on trail. They're not part of your group, but they're going to be coming in and out of this town.
How do you know that's happening? I've never seen that.
I, I do believe we had this conversation and I had posed this question at the last meeting as to how many ATV and UTV accidents there's been in the state of Wisconsin. I actually did um, a little bit of research of ATV accidents versus car accidents. Um, as of twenty twenty four, I, I want to say the number and I could be wrong. Maybe you guys know this off the top of your head. I think it was in the less than the hundreds and car accidents was over a hundred and fifty thousand already for the year. Um, so the, the amount of ATVs that are on versus cars versus the amount of accidents that Ray showed on, I think it's, is very skewed. Um, there's very few accidents on ATVs versus, and UTVs versus cars. You see them happen and Marshall, you could probably test this, how many happen within the village on a monthly basis?
I actually did ask that question of the lieutenant today at the sheriff's department. He says that based on his knowledge, there are about three collisions of each of those.
Yeah, is there a list and a record of those calls?
Just wanted to. Here's what I would say. Okay. How many motor vehicles are there in the state of Wisconsin? With how many accidents versus how many UTVs are there versus how many accidents? So what's that ratio? That's what I'm curious about.
Well, it's probably just a bit more of a vehicle. I mean, I have no comments.
Okay.
Alright. Is there any more questions of our marshal or our attorney? Alright. So I want to do is um, I will open it up to have comments from, from everybody out either on Zoom land or here in the audience. I do want to, just real quickly, I've had, I gotta pull these all up. In the last few days, I've had four or five people reach out to me. One text message today, he said, hey, Dan, I can't make the meeting tonight. Can you let everybody know that uh, bottoming pizza is all for the UTV ATV on roads as a business owner and with all my delivery drivers, we've had no issues on any roads in the town or on country roads. And we deliver from four to nine PM almost six days a week. Um, all of our drivers are for passing this. As you probably know, Cedar Grove allows you TV and ATVs on the road. So we see a deal. Um, a great deal of bad drivers before having any issues with the UTVs. So that was a text message that I received. Um, and then I had two residents reach out to me and just say that they are in, in favor of this. One was highly in favor of it. Um, and the other one said that they think, they think it would be a good idea um, to have in the village for our businesses and uh, for recreation. And then I also had an anonymous comment that came in today that was just given to me by Michelle. I'll read it kind of quickly here. It says, it may be true that there are not many instances of injury or otherwise associated dangerous risk factors in communities who have approved such laws. But it is impossible to understand how that would be true in this community where there are so many who already break the law regarding the use of ATVs. The number of ATVs that speed through neighborhoods already with unrestrained children at unsafe speeds with unlicensed drivers and disregard for the rules of the road is already a nuisance. Cannot imagine that number would be diminished with an allowance for the use, legal use of ATVs. This is already done by people who think that they can get away with illegality because nobody is looking. What's going to happen now that nobody, nobody really is looking? Or at least they think so. Understanding that many in the community do want to use, you do want the use of ATVs approved for street usage. I only ask the question be considered. Thank you. Alright. Uh, anybody that wants again to speak, just please state your name. So.
I've got a few comments. Dan Wolf, I'm a sergeant with the Marshals Office here, all time with the South Florida, Port Washington. And the village trustee for the village of Alton. We went through this a couple of years ago with the ATV club coming out of the municipality proposing a state license. When I first got with it, I was one hundred percent against it. I don't own an ATV and I don't have a horse or a race. What I did do was I went to listen to the information they provided and I went to our community's listening sessions. And as a trustee, I believe it was my job to listen to what the people like, since you was one, it was overwhelmingly overwhelming for ATVs. Eventually got voted in. We've had that ordinance now for a couple of years. Other than a few hiccups early on, we have had no problems involved with that. Now, that's not saying there are problems that could come up in the future, but as some of you have said, people are going to drive without licenses in cars. They're going to do an ATV. It's going to happen no matter what type of vehicle it is. But from my perspective, because of, we may also be having issues. Yeah, I, I look at it as one of the nine constituents, a hundred percent passed it from beginning to end, for it.
Thank you.
Shouldn't go out.
Okay. Yeah, just make sure again, for everybody, state your name.
Sure. I'm also in the show ATV, UTV club, rancher, the rights, roads and everything. As you know, it's all relative. There's a couple of things that are being talked about that I want to make sure that were very clear and all on the same page. For example, one of the questions I had for the, do you guys think laws, uh, like parking restrictions that during the winter months, that type of stuff, that's, and then probably with horse. The reason I bring that up, that's very, it's the exact same situation when it comes to ATV. If you want to put something in the ordinance that's above and beyond. For example, when we started this, we started in this room with the town. And we came to them with an ordinance almost identical to this, but they wanted to tweak it. They're the ones that actually came to us and said, can we work with you on the times? We want to keep people off the road. Want to have them shut down at eleven and we still want to cater to the hunters and the farmers that want to get outside of town and not get fired. That's great. Now that, you won't find that in state statute. But that's all the ordinance. How, how is this regulated? It's by local marshals. Uh, the sheriff and the worm will not regulate. Uh, custom ordinance, you guys were together, but you guys know. Above and beyond, some of these that actually have a marshal. So if they're doing something that's, that's incorrect uh, to the ordinance, like for example, let's say they come to town, they have to get a warrant. That could definitely be a thickening uh, situation. So there is a way to enforce. I, I know that there's a lot of talk about the alcohol and, and that was one of the things that Christie Noel and myself and Bob Humbley sat down for two years, we worked with her. And I was talking to the sheriff's department, uh, Lieutenant, um, Hunter and Christie Noel and ourselves to, to come up with some things that are really important. Alcohol, that's Christie's number one thing. She was a hundred percent in favor of our ordinance. She wanted to add that to the ordinance. Luckily, we take, we had already brought that up in the other communities, Cedar Grove, Belgium, Colin, uh, Colin Fridonia. And hey, we're responsible too, you know, and we don't want to wreck our sport. We want to make sure our sport is safe. Let's do it. It makes sense, right? So if the state is not enforceable, I think kind of this could be with that because we're finding out a lot of the other communities that it is. Our basic ordinance stuff is originally drafted up by the council or the city lawyers. And it's the same one that's pretty much binding in the state of Wisconsin. So right now, all sixty-three thousand miles in the state of Wisconsin kind of have this as their basis. Are they all the same? No. No, they all tweaked it a little bit and add their, their custom issues that we want to put in. And, and I really believe that you can do that as well. And the other thing that I haven't heard anybody really speak about is keep this in mind. Let's say you pass this ordinance. And um, let's say a year or two years from now, you see something that's just not right and not being corrected. We would ask that we get us involved. We would love to sit down and work with you and try to help correct it. But if you can't, then you pull that ordinance by the next meeting. And, and that's how all of these communities are looking at it. We're going to adopt this ordinance and see how it goes. If it goes good, we'll keep them. If we're having continual problems, well, that was my selling point. I'll, I mean, you guys have the authority to put it in and you have the authority to take it out. So just always keep that in mind because that's, that's not important. The other thing that I wanted to thought of, just that, that add to what your attorney said. You aren't correct about state and county rules. I, I work with department transportation, so I'm pretty up on how, how things was. When it comes to the state trunk highway fifty-seven, it's a no-go, obviously. But when the municipality, let's say the village of Fridonia accepts overall ways of living value. Um, but well, you still have a state act eighty-seven that protects uh, county and state rules will be tabled to be open if the speed limit is thirty-five miles an hour or less. So county trunk A went through right downtown Fridonia. It is not up to them. They have no say on it because the speed limit is thirty-five or less. That's, that's up to you. And that's what we're finding and that it's in act eighty-seven. And the state has passed that. Everyone, for example, city of Hartford. City of Hartford, in the last month, opened up all its roads. I, I, I saw in, in your letter, the market road, you know, uh, uh, state trunk sixty and thirty-three and eighties are some pretty heavy east west roads. I've been sixty to Hartford and eighty-three in Hartford. We have state roads in the Wisconsin dells there. I used to start this talking about Rhineland and everybody's like, hey, I love work, who cares? But it's moving down here. These big cities are doing this. So keep in mind, sixty-some thousand miles, there's a lot of people are giving this an F. Right now, the village is kind of an island. And it's roaming around. We're headed to the village of Sockville next. And pretty much everybody around me was over again. Uh, let's see, one of the other points that I wanted to yes. Uh, when you talk about driver's license and kids that are twelve years old and thirteen, that seems to give people some tension on an ordinance. It's very important. I have kids. It's important safety number one. So we're building a boat. Remember, these are all controlled by the V and R. They all offer that same situation. You cannot have a twelve-year-old kid hop on a four-wheeler and. You cannot have a twelve-year-old kid hop on a four-wheeler and bust his tongue. You think. Unless an adult is right next to him and in supervision with that person at all times. Not like, hey dad, I'll catch up with you at the end of the block. You have to be in supervision within the supervision range.
And they have to have the safety certificate.
And. I would forgot that, but there is a training and this training. Like we said at our last meeting here, you take that kind of seriously because. Us, we were trained and there's about six of us within our membership. That are going to be teaching ATV safety courses through the VNR. Spent a lot of time with them and, and they got us all up to speed and how they're training and all of that so we can certify these people. And yes, you have to have a certification license. So. All we're understanding is driver's license, but they need to have a certification license. And they're given that based on how they react and how they try. If they're safely bad enough or having the right turns and buttons and everything else. So. There are a lot of things going behind the scenes that we're not always blocking. So. Uh, so like I said, same as snowmobiles, obviously they're not on roads, but they cross with, they cross fifty-seven. And it could be. And then a twelve-year-old kid that's going from Belgium to Fredonia and they're going to go across fifty-seven. They have to be certified and within range. So. Um, I think I did mention you that the sheriff. And I, I hope you take this kind of the hard key. Ozaki County Sheriff sat down with us there. They're very happy with our production between the two of us, between them and us and how we came up to the goal base and. We went by eighty-piece, hundred daily traffic volumes. See this out that they did Fredonia, Main Street Fredonia is less than Main Street Belgium. And obviously we can talk about Hartford, these three land areas where allowing ATVs, it's way less than that. As a matter of fact, we had just opened up a section of. I was interested in Anne H, but Big Jules, out west wide. And now they got a request for the town line. So the sheriff is okay with it. He signed it. It's exploring. And I think what they're fighting, if you'd be willing to give us this chance. Almost just aren't piling up. Am I going to tell you that you never have a problem? You're fooling, you're respecting. But they're looking at it differently, but enforcement is, is huge. And, and then we feel one more thing in there. We worked with Tony Young and Ward. And obviously Christie Noel and the sheriff. If we see something wrong, we self-control. This is a lot of work coming these meetings and making sure that our sport is safe. So if Joe Logos flying through, he doesn't want to hear us, get the working log. And say, hey, this has got to stop. Do you want to put our sport? That's my spiel. I do everything to have.
Yeah, I wanted to get back to the question here. Um, so rates per cars versus. Um, there are almost five hundred thousand ATVs registered in Wisconsin, so it is basically another one of those expectations. Um, car death rates are thirteen per one hundred thousand. ATVs are two. Thousand, so considerably less on a racial basis. Um, and the other thing is, um, section twenty-three point three three in the state statutes does have other. Section twelve reinforcements and it does state in a service state control inspector or conservation order. Pointed by the department, the county sheriff or municipal officer has authority in jurisdiction. To enforce, enforce a section of ordinances enacted. So there are. State statutes already, it's two trillion dollars.
And that, and that section is included in my draft ordinance. So it's, that's another thing that's just adopted. So that it's.
Down our speed dial, but because we work with it so much and uh. And yeah, we, we will talk to people if, if, you know, if somebody said helps. Um, we've called Tony before, we've, you know. You know, just help it out, you know, so we want to help each other. Uh, but yeah, Belgium has had, you know, she's, what's whatever.
I urge you to check with Randy and Vegas and other villages, the whole of Cedar Grove. I feel, I mean, it's not for these people. They're kind of telling me pretty much what Dan said. Just had a guy with problems. We geared up for problems and they had a team. So.
Anybody else?
Um, the only other thing I was going to mention in Wisconsin, there's one thousand one hundred ordinances already, which all I have pillars. And tell the town, it's like that.
So I think one of the other questions that I had when we were talking amongst ourselves is. These, these I'm sure have come up about the. OWIs and the insurance and all that stuff at your other, at the other municipalities that you guys have, have been to. So how do they address those concerns? Or they just say, man, does it matter to us?
Well, I think what they need on is, you're absolutely correct, it's sever. Sever can look at it. But there's still kind of, and it's just like. Well, it's just like a snow, he comes through. You know, he could be. Out of a driver's license, but they assume. You, if, you just see him driving the town, he's not doing anything wrong, right? But if he's drinking, driving and creating a problem, he can get ticketed for, for his actions. So there is a, there's a penalty. It's not as bad as driving a car, I mean, you get W, but there is a penalty and a cost to this. And then there's second steps as you move through. If it happens twice, it's, it increases. So. So it's not like they're scot-free. Don't walk away thinking that way. But it is different from a vehicle. At a state. We work closely with a group called Lockheads, Wisconsin ATV Association. It's the state life. The president lives right in the she-pleton, Randy Hardy. And that's our voice with legislators. And we have talked to that fellow who blew in the face. Must be a lot of horrible decisions left there still. Because they're, they're just not looking to, to tackle that situation. Their answer was they're not having problems, so why attack it right now? It's weird, but that's what's going on.
That's because they're into tavern league and there's all these other really large influential. Obvious organizations that are on the other side of what, what we're trying to get done.
But keep in mind, if you never have a person speeding you down, whatever you call it. If there's never somebody breaking the law. And we're not saying it's never going to happen. But I'm telling you, the proof is out there already. These cleaners are not having problems with alcohol and that. It's going to happen. But it, it's so rare that what it does, I think it can be corrected with law. That's, that's when the meetings guys and that trust that they could, it's a bright.
If I might ask a question, and this is a serious question because uh, turning to what we're, we're looking for. Has this been tested? Obviously, you have contacted a lot of village attorneys, so those village attorneys like ours also handles. The court that may force them. Have you found any feedback from any of the other village attorneys as far as how these more restricted ordinances? Are they losing them in court? Are they succeeding in courts? Has this discussion just not happened? I mean, we're not here to give you think about it.
So the town of Belgium booked one in that was kind of scratched for that, but they had concerns. People on the lake didn't want to hear loud music as they're driving. Well, there's, the state statute provides for muffler noise desiccants. But loud music, so they had us put in their ordinance. Confined to their space. There actually is a vehicle statute for loud and sound stuff. So, and something can be put in. You won't find a word in pretty good, they can't. So, and, and it's difficult. I mean. I mean, you can't let as far as warnings versus.
And just to be clear, I did not include that in this ordinance because we already have just sort of a general noise ordinance on the books. And I feel like that could be applied to that situation. So.
For one more last thing up there that you feel free to ask a question about. When we put these together, one of the reasons we started with the towns uh association with ordinances is because. Be honest, make it easier for launch. One thing, also the end users, if you're driving from one community to the next, one says you gotta have a red machine, the next one says you have a blue one. Who can keep track of that? Who can? Who can keep track of all these separate little rules that are flying on there? So. We caution getting out of control by putting a lot of restrictions in. And try to stay focused on the state of Wisconsin and the VNRs that help you with and take care of. I mean, that's. Pretty much the same with voting, it's no good to start getting violent, it's hard to something.
So. I'm just going to say, and I don't know if everybody realizes or not, but we're, we're not actually voting on anything tonight. Um, this is purely all for a discussion. So. And then any. Changes that we would want to make to this ordinance should we decide that we wanted to um move forward with it would be voted, it would be voted on in September. Anybody else want to comment on anything?
Thanks, Manny. Last minute. Uh, just a resident.
It gets to that point, you know, that make a point. There's been a lot of time. Money and effort put into this point where we're at here. I would ask that any decision that's best to me. Public without giving a lot of information, so is our marshal. Um, the lawyer, attorney, obviously, but. Based on a decision, you know, off of what we know to be, you know. These things aren't happening all the time, but it's, you know, it's legal in these other towns. It's not happening. That's always a fear. But try and make that decision based on what we know to be fact. And not what could happen or we're so scared. You know, God, you. Made a lot of points, a lot of stuff that could happen, but. Quite frankly, we've heard from a lot of people that know better and it's just not. So I would ask that you make a decision based on fact, not fear. So that's.
Thank you.
That's a unique way of putting it.
I, I just want to add one more final thing that. Um, we're not coming here to ask you to drag through your town or village by any means. The residents have come to us, asking us to come here. It's like the, there was Cedar Grove, just like other places. So we're, we're just. Talking, we could have, they asked us to represent them. And this, so please don't think that we're just kind of a commercial village here by any means. So, um, yeah, I just want to add that, that residents.
Now, I, I know better than that. I, I'm not worried about your people at all. I'm not worried about your crew, the people that you influence. People that you teach, people that you talk to and a lot of other stuff. Because they're getting the right story, they're getting the information they need. I'm worried about the tourists. The idiots that. Are going to find their way to Belgium. Or Cedar Grove, maybe, maybe Fredonia, maybe Sockville, who knows? Maybe they'll get stopped in Hartford, turn around and go. I'm just, I'm, I'm a worst case scenario guy, like our, our marshal. And uh, to protect the people on the village, I feel that's the stance that I have to take. I wish I could get to a yes. Yeah, I hate doing this. But I just, I haven't gotten to a yes. If, if we had things that we could, could do, if we could talk to legislature, they could turn a couple of knobs. But you know, you got, uh, what's his name that says to, uh. Anyway. You, it's, it's not that easy, but it's not easy for us if we have to have something in our ordinance that we can't really. We can't really enforce.
The guy that you're worried about is probably driving a car too. So keep that in mind that. They're everywhere. There's, there's bad exits that work for everybody. You cannot just all on ATVs.
Alright, good morning.
My name is Tom Shesky and I live in Hartford, Georgia. But I wanted to address Dan's comments to now, because I think they're reasonable, but our idiots out there say that. But right now, the village is an island. Because it's surrounding, also it's surrounding here in San Antonio. And for the end future, they're not always aware that a village or a municipality doesn't have ordinance. So when you see people on the village roads, well, yes, some of them are just. Breaking laws, they know there's a, not. But many of them are people who are coming from the town or, you know, out of Belgium or whatever. They don't realize, don't have an ordinance. So if you don't have the ordinance. Or if you do, you're still going to have people passing people on your time. There's not a difference. I think both cases, uh, that there is no one here. So. You know, being this island, I think. Well, I understand your complaints about the idiots that may come through and tear up roads and be reckless. Do you think that's going to exist? No matter which way you go on this uh, situation.
Alright, I'm gonna ask for any final comments from anybody that hasn't commented on, just in order to keep the timing here going. So. I see him.
Alright, uh, my name is Chris Yante. And it's. Right on the side, I, I believe it says five here. And for us to say tourists and idiots go to Fredonia. Uh, we were spending all this money on the splash bed. We're spending all this money developing this community, recording people in. Uh, I think it's kind of counterproductive. I also heard you say that you don't want this to be somebody's playground. Uh, and again, I think that's kind of counterproductive to the way that I see this village going. This village is having festivals. They're having, uh, you know, music in the park. They're having a hundred and fifty of anniversaries. They're having breaks. To purposely bring people into this community. Having this ordinance and allowing people to do drives-through is one more thing that this community can do. In order to bring outside people to see the great things that Fredonia has to offer. And again, I'm a, I'm a village resident. I live in the town of Sockville. I can zip up and down in front of my front yard. All I want in one direction, but if I go the other direction, I'm out there. Got about a hundred feet before I have to stop. It would be really nice if I could just ride my ATV to the fellow or to the different communities. Also, if I could drive my ATV down to Fireman's Park. And just hang out and watch my daughter play as she's on her bike. You know, that would be a great thing. But this is something that I think would bring money, would bring rights from these folks down, okay? I know that, you know, there are different organizations, uh, one of which is old, older they take. Lying and, uh, you know, to saving people on ATV routes. That was actually planned to go through Fredonia until they found out he didn't. Uh, they did a motorcycle ride at a certain point. It's one thing that prevents people that try to do good. So again, I think. Watching the wording of how we view outsiders and idiots, tourists and having this. Big stigma of them, that I think is counterproductive to everything that's still described.
Alright, anybody else want to make any comments?
He's being circus.
Alright. So I guess. We want to look at the, we should be looking at the ordinance, right? And discussing if there's changes, if we want to vote on this in the, in the next time that we come to it, uh, to actually make recommendations on things that we should or should not. Putting into the ordinance. As it's submitted right now or printed up into your packet right now, is there anything that anybody would? Want to take out or add or anything like that? Because again, this will be voted on at the next. Regular village board meeting.
Good question. Are, are we allowed to set, uh. Certain roads are yes and certain roads are no. Or does it eventually say, well, no, you've got to accommodate everybody and all the roads are ready to wait? They're all. I've heard it both ways.
So you, the board can decide which. Village roads it wants to open as routes. Where it gets. Tricky slash expensive. Is if you only designate certain roads, but not others. You have to individually sign those roads as ATV routes. Whereas if you simply pass an ordinance saying all the village roads are open, then you only have to put signs basically at the borders. Coming in that say all village roads are ATV routes and you don't need to individually sign. All the streets.
But then you still have access to all of the roads there.
Yes. If you, if you open them all, then you can just sign, put the signs up at the roads that enter the village at the border saying all the roads are open. If you pick and choose, you can do that, but then you have to put up a lot more signs because you have to individually sign. All of the roads that you've decided to open. So that's the, the trade off in that.
And we caution, uh, limiting streets of which. We allow. An ATV route to be posted, I think it ends up causing a lot more confusion. Um, you have, you know, even on some of the county roads, and it's been a few years since I turned on any of the county roads, but. You can get so far, I can get so far on Martin Drive and then I have to stop and turn around. And then I can go so far this way, but then where's the sign and have to stop and turn around, and then I have to try and figure out which, which direction I'm going. I think it causes a lot more confusion and. That could in turn cause a lot more issues of. You know, having the marshal having to get involved, well, you're not allowed on this street, but you can go on this street, or if we don't allow on Fredonia Avenue, well, you can go south in Fredonia. But you can't cross the street and go north. So I think that tends to be a little counter, we would counterproductive with what we're trying to do.
You know, what road is it that should be, we heard A. The Bay Road, but other than that, are there other roads that you'd have a mind that you? You know, that this would be a yes for you, you'd buy all of the votes.
Well, if we had just. Uh, mine, this isn't a suggestion, but there were something that was. So, yeah, it might have been activity, uh, one of those. Things that would seem to make sense, like we would have two men, east, west, Earl Ferris. Uh, Martin and, um, and Fredonia Avenue, we'd have a north south, which is Milwaukee Street. All the way from Martin, all the way to Middle Lark and out of town, which goes right past my house.
Gotcha.
You know. And a spur off of Fredonia for the gas station.
I think what you opened up though is how the people that aren't on those routes, you just said you're on there, so you'd be fine. But how do I, I'm not on there.
With a trailer? No, it's, it's something that you, it's either all or nothing.
Yes.
And it doesn't work any other way and it's too expensive to not do it, so unwaste. It's kind of, it goes another good city. Are they trying to get you guys to buy electric, all electric cars? If, if. No, they'll get you, they'll, pretty soon, they'll get you. With your seventy-five thousand dollar ATV with the battery that's, uh.
Just hold Trump, it's him.
Don't say anything, they might be listening, right?
That's it.
So don't put that to minutes.
Most kind, trying to keep it slow.
Is there anything else that anybody's looked at in here? Again. I just wanna say we're not, we're not voting on this tonight, um, we're gonna have to come back and have a. Mark, mark this up as we want to and it has to be a completed marked up ordinance before we could vote on it.
If you prefer your last September meeting.
Uh, depending. Right.
If you guys have edits to it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we would need to make those minutes before the next meeting.
Not trying to hurry this process along, I just want to be very mindful of time that we have here tonight. For other presenters that are here. Right.
It's either all or nothing, that's what I was saying.
I agree.
So some of the things that the marshal had, uh, requested was valid driver's license. Uh, considering restricted routes, which we kind of talked about, and then the open intoxication stipulations, is there anything additional? From the marshal's recommendations that we would want to have to current. Right up from our attorney.
I wouldn't wanna put anything in there that we can't enforce. You're taking on my ability. Or you're just not gonna enforce it. And can you get in trouble, Abby?
We're not enforcing it?
We're enforcing it.
Or for, I'm trying to understand.
We're not enforcing according to.
Well, I think that's what they're saying is if there's something in there, I mean, they can. As our attorney was saying, like you can, you can actually. Write a ticket for something, but if that's not enforceable, you're, you know, you just run the risk of taking it to court and everything else and it getting dismissed, correct me if I'm wrong.
That answers another question. State of Wisconsin has an old duty that acts statute.
There's no.
Yeah, there is an old duty that acts statute in state of Wisconsin.
Yeah, so then you have discretion.
We have discretion, yes.
Your questions or comments? On this. I feel like we're getting to the point where. It's getting very blurry here and I just wanna make sure that as we're talking about this, even if it doesn't, you know, go into next time. That we're all having, you know, good discussions and know where our heads are with it, rather than just kinda going, uh-huh. Yeah, I think so too. Yep.
And maybe come together and live the.
Yeah.
Third occasion on ordinance, hopefully might see.
Sure.
Then. Have the next draft of the vote.
That good for everybody?
So are there any edits or changes that you would like us to make to this document? Based off tonight's discussion?
I don't think so.
For a little while and think about the discussion that you've had tonight and then come to the next meeting with your edits. And not necessarily have. No. Come to the meeting with the edits. We'll take those edits. Process them. Come back to you at the last meeting.
Yeah, just a, a final topic to, to go to.
Alright.
I understand, just. A lot of study. One thing to do.
Yep. Okay.
That's good.
That's okay, and then I think that we're gonna move on for the night. Thank you for coming again, I appreciate it. We're, it's a process we're getting through and it'll take some time, but. Discussion is good. You haven't seen it. Absolutely.
Feel like chickens took on ribbon this.
Yeah, chickens, chickens did take a long time, so.
Say, we have one more topic to discuss.
This will be fun too. Yeah, and it's relevant to anybody that's in here. Village residents at least.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, alright, next we have discussion and possible action on November twenty twenty four referendum question to increase the levy for the purposes. Of funding the joint ALS paramedic program. Um, nah, we're like, no, no. Hello, sir. How are you? Well, good. We'll, uh, make sure we send you home with some energy drinks so that you can wake up tomorrow morning and. Yeah, definitely not. Okay, so again, as we had said, we had a discussion, we had an open listening session. I don't. Last, the, the Tuesday before, so a while ago. Uh, that went very well, like I said, it was well attended, I think we had good comment, good feedback. If you remember. The last meeting that we had, we were discussing, um, a couple of things, A, were we gonna do a referendum? B, was it gonna be a long term, uh, short term, and what the dollar amount was going to be? So. I think where we should start this is we've finally kind of got all of our information together, right? We've gotten some of the updated values from the state and all that stuff, and maybe what we should do is. Have Todd talk to us a little bit from elders about where we are, what our obligations are gonna be, all that stuff. Obligations, but maybe what the levy will be, all those things and kind of go from there. Is that a fair, fair way to start this? Think? Yeah, yes.
Yeah, and I guess I'll just summarize at the end of last meeting, I think you answered two out of those three questions, right? It sounded like there's consensus that yes, we should go to a referendum, there's consensus that that lowest number, that two hundred K was the ask. And now the only outstanding question is what, how long are we gonna be asking for? So. Okay, perfect, great, take it away, sir.
Sure, so this is literally not off the press, could finalize something. Go on Saturday noon. Uh, so there's a lot of stuff in the resolution, but what I would point you to is the important part is really. Of the last paragraph on the front page, which is number three. And this is a spoken call with a question.
And read this last word.
On the ballot, it's, uh, if you can vote for with this. Uh. On our, long increasing your luggage vote, Fredonia for the tax exempt clause. Uh, for twenty twenty five is limited to zero.
Red, green, color.
That is your net construction percentage of the January first, twenty twenty four. Uh, and that would result in a levy of one million, twenty two, six, twenty five, and I'm gonna touch on this other exhibit. Uh, in a moment to show you how to write those numbers. And then the question is, shall you be allowed to exceed this limit? Uh, for the purpose of hiring or hiring, assuming that the service personnel capital purchases. Uh, to the building Fredonia started for a medical program. Uh, by a total sixteen point three five eight percent. Uh, which results in a levy of one million four, twenty two, six, twenty five. And on a high way basis, including the increase of two hundred thousand. And then there's two language options, which are a little hard to read, to read. Uh, shows are better on the word document, but the choice would be either for each fiscal year going forward, which would be ongoing. Uh, or for the fiscal years twenty twenty five to twenty twenty eight. Meaning that, uh, that after the twenty twenty eight budget year, that hundred thousand is backed out of your levy limit. Uh, so at that point, you would either have to go to referendum again prior to that. Uh, so that will be available on time for the twenty nine budget. Uh, you would have, or you would have to somehow figure out a different way to fund the program or discontinue participation, uh. In the program, uh, I mean, just my comment would be is, uh, I, I can't tell you there has not been any. Limited term referendums at the state, I don't know that for a fact, but I cannot. So it's just rather unusual, uh, for referendums not to continue. Uh, simply again, because of the position, uh, where you've got to back to the voters again. And if it fails, you know, we plan that while you. Essentially, you can either bond alternatively then pause or, uh, eliminate it. I wanna just show this to you quickly because this is really where the numbers come from and. What this is, is a back simile of your budget for eight, so there's. There's three sets of columns here, the first is what your budget limit worksheet actually look like. For the budget year we're in right now, so people, we don't bomb that column. One million, one forty, eight, five, twenty, that was what you levy for the current year. And then we basically pre complete the worksheet in two ways, one is without the referendum amount and one is with the referendum. And as you kind of look down the column, there's a couple of things that are going on. So general obligation debt services exempt from the levy limit, so what we end up, um. Doing is we, we have to back that number out as the two fifty five, six fifty two. And then the adjustments on the net new construction are based on debt without debt service total. And then at the bottom, we had a debt service back in. So for next year, the portion of the village's debt that's actually paid by the levy versus sewer versus at increment district. Is three thirty one, two fifty five, so in both scenarios, that gets added back in. And then we add that two hundred thousand bright blue here at the lower right, and that gets you to fifty fourteen, twenty two, six, twenty five. So the important point here is we're putting that in higher debt service payment here. And then when we compare the lower right in column, that's hundred thousand's rest of the percentage of what the levy would be without the referendum. Uh, hence what sixteen point three percent comes from now. The reason I wanted to mention this is a question that Chris said asked me, and it came up in your prior discussions, is if we don't need the. Two hundred thousand today, we're really building that for where we need to be a few years down the road. What are we going to do with the extra money? Well. And there's a couple of approaches you could take, or one is you would have that levy authority. Uh, you could levy those dollars and, for example, you could set those aside. And apply those towards future capital equipment purchases for the program. Uh, you could put those dollars into your general fund balance, but again, if you have that. Two hundred thousand, uh, is really sized to carry you for a few years. And if you build up some cash in the earlier years, you can apply that on the. You know, the old years, when you get four, five, six years out, I think I'll carry that for a few more years before you might get the referendum. Yeah, but the other option you would, uh, have. Is, uh, you simply reduce the three thirty one to fifty five. Uh, like you said, the levy next year. So let's, I'm just gonna make up some numbers here, I can't remember what they're on, what they want to say, you only need a hundred and fifty thousand. Next year, uh, but you have a two thousand additional authority, you would just reduce the three thirty one to fifty five by a fifty thousand, maybe just a lot less. So then that service adjustment number is a flexible number, is my point. Uh, so I, I just wanted to make a point, I could, you know, uh. The referendum assets, if it's three hundred thousand, that is an obligation to levy that amount, gives you the authority to levy that amount. And the way you would adjust that is by adjusting that debt service adjustment. Um.
The only thing, I'm just gonna comment, but the only thing that that would do is it could fluctuate where we end up being as far as our tax payments every year, if anybody understands that. Yep.
So, and I think you and I talked about that, that, you know, if the voters go into the polls knowing that. Alright, it's gonna be two hundred K, my taxes are gonna go up about this much, they already know that, right? So they're already, already in a sense voting yes. So, but, and they might be happily surprised, right, when they get their tax allowance, not as much, but then we're gonna do the reverse, right? When we do any of those dollars, yeah.
Right, so that's just one thing.
Yeah.
So that's essentially the same thing that's a school thing, to be on what's there, just what could reverse?
I guess I can speak to that, yeah.
So we're stumbling all every, uh, two fifty five, six fifty two. Every year, correct? To take care of P and I on our, on our debt.
That's actually going on three thirty one.
Yep.
So we're just talking about like next year, when we still have grand dollars, we only, we only need a hundred K of that, right? So do you offset the debt levy by a hundred K, or do you still collect that a hundred K and apply it to many of the things that he was just talking about?
Didn't we say that if we don't levy all of it, that? There's a possibility that we don't get a debt.
That's the gen, that's in your general levy, so yes, which is why we're offsetting with the debt level.
And debt level, you can play.
Yeah.
Well.
What was the consensus, sorry Dan, uh, what was the consensus, and I apologize, I wasn't able to attend the, uh. Meeting the other week, uh, what was the consensus from the public regarding? Looking at program or looking at a referendum for a limited time versus over the next ten years?
They wanted to see the opportunity.
Right.
Because they want to show that we're getting the program.
Right. And from some comments about that. Yeah, and I think from, from the fire department and the paramedics standpoint too, it's. I think it's in twenty twenty six that we're supposed to be completely staffed, was it twenty five? Right. Yep. So to their point, how do you market something, something saying, hey, we. Well, well, you know, okay, yeah, we have a referendum going out through twenty twenty eight, please join our fire department, our, as a para, a paramedic, but we really don't know if you're gonna. Have the program past twenty twenty eight, the marketing becomes very hard and. Yeah.
Or I really love trade individuals. And if you can't offer them a long term debt with us.
Right.
Yeah, because they're been looking for Charles, yes.
Right.
You know, with the coming program, coming program, you know, there was that stability plan there that it made us, that helped us. It could, we would only have one until the end of twenty twenty five.
Mm-hmm.
Would have signed up in jobs.
Right.
Positions, I mean, you would have had, you would have had young, young people coming out of college or coming out. Their paramedic degree, then coming here with their license and no experience. And you know, uh, two, two days ago, we had that. They went through our, currently have, we have Josh with. Twelve years of experience, we have Crystal with eight years of experience, we have Dean with thirty, here's an experience. Sorry, none of these people have seen it. And, and. I would stand this. We're a harm, but I understand this program, I don't get any of them that have established this common for. For a month they have, but.
Right.
These people are experienced, a lot of those other programs had kids that are school one or two years. No experience.
Um, what else can I say? Yeah, I mean. That was the general comments, right, the people that were. What else can I say? Yeah, I mean, that was the general comments, right? The people that were in support of it and just stating that. You know, they would like to see it long-term as a commitment to the community. Obviously, we've got some of the detractors on, um, online that talk about. You know, oh, we don't need it or whatever, but they sure would probably want it if, you know, something happened to them. Um, I think that we, you know. We're, I mean, uh, we're committed to this program, right? We've, we've gone down the road this far. I think that. Um, now it's up to the public and I think the ultimate task will be the referendum in November. Do, do they want, do they feel like they need this program? I think that we know that we're all taxing ourselves, right? And it's a tax on ourselves. Um, but I think that it's going to be up to the taxpayers to say yes or no. I think that we've got a responsibility to be able to speak to the program and know why it has the worth that it has. And I think, you know, the adjustments that we can have on the debt levy. Whether we do that or not, I think can be taken at a committee level and in each year or whatever. But I think that this overall number of two hundred thousand, um. Will get us where we probably need to go for the next foreseeable future, uh, to make it work.
And we're confident.
Love that.
We're confident. You know, I know there was some questions at our last meeting about the estimates that we had and. They're based on what we know. We know we're feeling confident with those numbers and. As confident as we can be.
There's a lot of variables in there that we don't know year to year. I mean, insurance goes up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It never comes, but it goes up, well, ten percent, even five percent does our.
Right.
And, and, and to be fair, that's, that's why we're coming to you with the two hundred ask. I mean, in twenty twenty six, we need, we technically need to base our estimates one seventy five. Or give ourselves a little wiggle room to cover those.
But I think to Todd's point, there, you know, the other points as well as if we can just get, you know, this one school of thought, right? Just levy it, just be done with it. Because then if we can take that a hundred and fifty thousand or whatever, that it would be that we don't necessarily need that first year. And put it towards. A fu, you know, a fund saying, okay, what, what if this happens? We can stretch the program longer that way.
Yeah, you've got to bank, you can bank that.
Right. Not, but again, that's going to take some marketing and it's going to take talking to people and having them understand that, right? Because it, you know. Exactly, which is great. There are citizens that said, hey, how do we help? So that was cool.
And here it is. I just want to make this very clear that I am not against that.
Absolutely.
I'm true to think of all aspects and be responsible, you know, with what we're going to our taxpayers for, myself included, but.
I actually asked Todd for that exact new mill rate. Do you remember off the top of your head? Okay. Yeah, seventy five cents per, no, no. Yeah, for one thousand dollars a value.
Four dollars and.
Like it's cheaper than Starbucks.
You said about point seven five per one thousand? Yeah. So like for me, it'd be an increase of like three hundred and ninety dollars a mo, a year.
So one, one little question on the mechanics and for your my adherence on this one, uh, looking at the wording, uh, are two choices. At the end, so you know, do this for each fiscal year going forward, or the other one for fiscal year is planned up. Assuming, as we should, uh, we do the going forward statement. Somehow in the future, when this is needed, how do we sound second?
Hmm, that's a good question. Yep. So if, I don't know, let's use, to use ten years, for example. If in ten years we reach into the program and the four municipalities decide, well, we don't want to do this anymore. Um, again, as Todd said, just because you are allowed to go up to this levy amount doesn't mean you have to, right? So that future board at that time could say, well, we don't need this extra two hundred K. We're going to give huge relief to our taxpayers. We're going to lower our levy down that amount because this program just does not exist anymore.
I don't think they're going to attack us for doing that.
Donnie, I won't be here then. Well. Yeah, it was, it was length of term and is this program necessary? Do you need this?
So then they're talking on more, they're thinking more of the material thing than what it's going to cost.
I think a lot of people were, yeah. And, uh, you know, there were multiple people that said, I don't care what I have to pay. If I know that I am calling nine one one and a paramedic's there, it's worth it.
Yeah, and like she said, like, and she falls.
Yeah.
Every twenty minutes.
That was a, a godsend. It was a choking baby.
I just wanted.
The test is a higher rate of living. That's one of the common things that a couple of people said about the care and passion that our. Paramedics are often, for our community.
Right. I just wanted to update you guys for those that, you know, watch these things like I do. There were some referendums on August ballots, uh, on the August election, um, throughout the state. I believe there's seven EMS ones, if I remember right, and six out of those seven passed. And the one that didn't pass was by a handful of votes. Um, so just know that carries that theme that we learned in April, that there's a high chance of, of success with that.
Yep.
Yeah, well, the village of Virginia kept on passing a referendum as well.
Yeah, well.
I mean, that's.
They just didn't have it up in the rest of the country.
That's neither here nor there.
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, the village of Virginia, I'm afraid to spin a curve around like for things that we did.
Agreed.
And that's, that's part of the concern that I have is, you know. Yes, we need this program. Yes, we need to pass this referendum. What happens when the next thing comes out? And now. We're asking for another referendum next year for, you know, X, Y, and Z, and another referendum the year after that for another X, Y, and Z. That's my concern is that we get, we have to keep going back to the community.
I mean, it's checking to your point. This is what we see that we need now.
Oh, for sure.
I mean, I'm basing off my volunteer numbers, right? Uh, I, in the presentation that I did the other night, I told that I have. The building's paramedics, I had eight people that I rely on to have to staff that ambulance twenty four seven. That's over eleven, almost eleven hundred hours on all time that they have. I have one or two or three more veteran people, uh, you know, over the next couple of years without these paramedics here. The rest of them are going to say, I can't do this, right? So we may be sitting here, we, we may say that this, in reality, we may say that for our programs, we were looking at it for ten years. We may be back here in five years and saying, we need to do more. I hate to say it, but, you know, the, the days of volunteers, they're gone.
And. Yeah.
Yeah, and that's that one guy who commented, uh, we need to pay for our police force, but we don't pay exactly for our therapy, I guess.
It's, uh, uh, Dan, and I wrote about this earlier. Uh, especially with my time in port, this port, like every other place in the economy is having problems with those volunteers. There is no worse moment as a police officer. Cause I can do one thing, I can do CPR. When I go to that place and I do CPR, I do the war, I do it in our camp. And then I hear over the radio that, or it doesn't have an ambulance. Sawco doesn't have an ambulance. My ambulance is coming from rafting receiver. There is no worse feeling knowing that while I'm sitting there doing CPR. The cavalry's not coming, at least not for a while.
That's, that's a powerful statement.
All right, this sounds like we know what we need.
I think so, yeah. Um, I think that, I think the amount, you know, we, we had talked about, I talked about it last time. I was skeptical of going too high, where we had two hundred, two twenty five, two fifty. I, I think that this accomplishes. What we need to do. It keeps us go, uh, going for the, for the near term and it gives us a good, uh, leg up on, on what's needed at the moment. To get us going for however many years. Um, I know at the, you know, Belgium, I believe they're voting on Monday. Uh, Monday to do theirs as well. So, I mean, I think we're all just kind of fall, falling in line here and see what happens in November would be my comment.
So you have to send this into the QR.
I already have the email drafted.
Okay.
And when you guys tell us what to do, I'm going to go delete one of the attachments and press them.
Do you have language for both cities?
Yeah, you'll, you'll take out the.
I mean, I mean, it sounds pretty clear that we're taking it all.
The first one.
For the fiscal years twenty five through twenty eight along with the first ones.
Yeah. Is everybody in agreement?
Yeah.
No, sure. We don't want to go back to referendum. Short term. No, 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 we're saying that the one that we, that was going to go from twenty five to twenty eight, we're not doing it.
Okay.
We're going to do that one.
Um, just real quick, I know it's all late, we're all tired, but I just wanted to touch on the marketing. Good, good. I just want to touch on the marketing piece of this real quick because I, we've been having conversations with Belgium. Um, so obviously we're going to continue to do the listening sessions. I think those are great opportunities. Um, the fire, fire chief's going to continue to, to lead that effort and not just here, but other municipalities too, to educate people on this program. Um, we've talked about doing at least two postcards with information, um, to get, uh, that information out to them. Uh, so we'll continue social media, we'll build up, build out a page in our website. We'll give all that information, all those opportunities that we can to the voter who learn about this program. So that they feel, uh, well informed come November fifth.
May I ask a question?
Oh, yep, we do. We have a question from somebody coming from the audience, it sounds like. Yeah, go ahead.
What about the possibility of having yard signs?
Oh, the possibility of having yard signs, I think is the question. I, I don't think that we have any, um.
I don't know if we.
Right.
Should have yard signs, but that doesn't mean like the fire association, right?
Right.
That they could lead that effort, I would think.
So, yeah. The village is limited as an entity to providing information and education. But can't affirmatively advocate, vote yes or vote no.
Correct. Makes sense.
There was some third party group, uh, private group that formed that wanted to, they would have to register as a. Campaign committee essentially, and they could do anything that a campaign could normally do, which would include spending money and putting up. Buying yard signs that say vote yes or vote no, depending on what side they were on, they can do that, but, um. The same way you can't say vote for this candidate or vote for that candidate, you couldn't affirmatively advocate for or against. But you can certainly provide information that explains. Concerns about staffing, um, and there is certainly, that's something that is very common with these sorts of, uh, referenda.
So, so I guess what, what the general answer to that question is, can the village do that? No. Can somebody else do that? Absolutely.
So you said, you said, so, so we have, we're crystal out this point, we have a fire EMS association that's totally separate from. The village departments, so they would have to apply or be billed as a campaign.
Correct.
On, or what was it?
Campaign committee.
Cause yeah, that'd be a way of us getting some, um, getting some yard signs or other PR out there, right?
Yeah, sure. Or an individual that wanted to, I mean, they would have to start a separate committee called the, you know. Vote yes for Fredonia Committee and they would fill out the paperwork and then they can get donations, raise money, spend money, do anything that a campaign. Committee can otherwise do to try and influence voters one way or the other.
Perfect, thank you.
Yes, yeah. So, yeah, like I said, I was at the village of Belgium, or village of, that's the Belgium party department. I was at the money party run, we had a public session here. Um, and then last night, uh, the village of Belgium had a meeting as well. So we gathered a call to the question that we're at, and then there's one of the talking points in there.
And we've been, we've been collecting material from other municipalities who've done this already. Um, if you guys remember in the back of your newsletter, right, there was a little precursor of information. So that's the kind of material that we are able to do.
So Jonathan, some of those materials we've collected, some municipalities have laid out what a yes vote means and what a no vote means. Are we allowed to do that?
Sure, yeah. I think that falls under the educational sort of aspect of it, of providing explanation, that sort of thing. It just can't cross the line into advocacy, right? Now, certainly individual trustees in their individual capacity can talk to their friends and neighbors about, here's why I'm. Voting this way and I think you should too, um, as long as it isn't, you know, across, you know, those sort of conversations are fine. The same way you could talk to your friends and neighbors about candidates you like or don't like, uh, but just the village as an entity can't. Do that.
Thank you.
So I think, um, where we're at now is we have this ordinance in front of us that has the three options. And I think any, I would, I'd say that any motion that comes in would just state option number three or whatever is presented.
These are going, but the highlighted portion is what you guys need to tell us what to do. So all three, so this entire resolution is going to come back before you, and the only parts that are going to change. Is the green part. You're going to pick one of the two.
When it comes back to us?
Yes, but you'll have the exact same thing, one way or the other.
Okay, so what are we approving right now?
You are, you're giving us clear direction on one of those two options, and then that's what we're going to bring back to you next meeting. That's a special meeting, I should say. Take it away.
Two hundred for.
So you're going.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
I believe, I believe that's what's up, so it's two hundred, uh, for each fiscal year going forward.
And we're hoping that that will actually be enough to keep it going for many, many years without going back to referendum. But as she said, we have no less weight to have in.
We're kind of getting the process as we go into it, we're gathering the money for expenses.
I would entertain a motion that would go along at the.
I think what is on the other side.
Um, I usually felt like it could be a consensus type thing, but it could also be a vote.
Okay. So.
A vote would be great too.
Well, discuss, uh, all of these are for items for discussion and or action. So does that allow us to vote on this?
Yes.
When it says be discussed.
We want to vote?
Yeah, yeah.
We made a motion to, uh, draft the referendum while striking the statement of fiscal years two thousand twenty five. Twenty eight. And leaving the final basis.
I'll second that.
All right. I have a motion. I have a second. Are there any other questions, concerns, screaming, yelling, anything like that? I will call the vote on. All those in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
So just real quick, if I could just touch what you're going to see at the special meetings. At the special meeting, you're going to see this final draft that you'll be approving. And ideally, uh, you have a, the joint ALS paramedic, uh, committee is meeting next Wednesday. To hopefully finalize again the agreements. It's, um. Just letting you know that they're considering that.
I'm with that guy.
Yeah. Yeah.
We're very, very hopeful.
So they're on the agenda for the special meeting if they get recommended for approval, so that way you guys can rubber stamp that as long with this referendum.
Yeah, come on, Chris.
I think that's called conflict of interest and I have that in my contract, so.
All right. Is there, thank you very much, Todd, for coming. Appreciate it. Do we have any correspondence on anything?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, items for future consideration, I just have two quick things. Number one, I did mention earlier that I was contacted by Dave Carles from the school. He would like, and I would like as well, for us to set up a joint meeting, if not in September, I, I hope in September. Um, to just kind of touch base as to where we are. Uh, it hasn't happened for probably over a year, I don't think. And that's something traditionally that we had done every now and again. So I think it's good to just kind of, uh, touch base and do all that stuff. So hopefully we can figure out a time to do that.
Between the school committee and.
School board, school board and our board. So kind of a committee of the whole type thing.
There is a school board meeting on Monday, I believe, six P M. If anybody is interested in.
Correct.
Attending.
Yep. And then the only other thing that I have is obviously, as we alluded to today, um, we are going to be starting to have committee meetings for the budget process for twenty twenty five. As part of that, um, there will be, I believe, Administrator Jenkins, your contract is up, I believe, at the end of this year, correct? So I would at some point like to just have, um, again, a conversation, a review, like a, a review type thing amongst all of us. And then we'll, you know, before we start having those discussions, and I think then ideally we would have his contract. Obviously done, uh, before we would start and finish the budget process. I think that's going to be important. So I'd like to do that with everybody at some point, um, in the near future. With that, I don't have anything else. Does anybody else have anything?
I just want to say out loud that we have a special meeting on August twenty second.
Yeah, seven P M.
Seven P M. Seven PM.
If, uh please be here. If you, if you can't be here. Let the clerk know, that'd be great, but we need a quorum for sure. Anything else for the good of the order?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to second, all those in favor?
Hi.
Nice. Opposed, you're out of here at nine thirty. Thank you, everybody for. Yep, not too bad. Well, I don't wanna make a habit of it though.